Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started with the committee of the whole meeting. It's December seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. The time is five oh two P. M. And we do have a lot of legislation in committee, but we are going to speak a little bit. Well, I'm going to have Heather speak and some of the department heads on some transfers that are going to be made from the CDBG funds as well as ARPA funding. So what I'm going to do is turn the floor over to Heather and she will go through a few pieces of legislation. Then if we have any questions, we'll get far away.
Okay. The first piece is proposed ordinance for twenty-four. This has to do with, this is a supplemental appropriation which you don't normally see. They only go to E and A. It's usually grant funding. This one is coming to you because they felt in transparency, this is not a new grant. This is money that had been paid back from revolving loans and HUD would like to see it spent. And so Brian, you got a memo about this about a half hour ago. It's only got it from Jack. But they're using this to install heat pumps into low and moderate individuals incomes homes. So I don't know if Brian is here tonight to talk about this, if you have any questions.
Did you say number twenty-four?
Number twenty-four. That's what was in the packet that I got on Friday.
Right.
For ARPA reallocation. No, it's not what this one says. No, it's number twenty-four at the top, right here. It's a hundred fifty thousand and four. It's a hundred fifty thousand, so.
And this went to E and A, it was approved at E and A.
We have number twenty.
Oh, yeah, I don't, I only put it out when I got it on Friday.
That's the, that's the new packet.
So it's our, it's, it's proposed ordinance number.
Proposed ordinance number twenty, everyone.
Twenty?
Yeah.
Twenty, okay. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Number twenty, okay. So does anybody have any questions on that or Brian or myself?
Pretty much, I read the memo. It seems pretty straightforward.
Okay, proposed ordinance number twenty-two. This has to do with moving some CDBG, CDBG money around as it relates to our green team, the employment program that Brian is here to talk a little bit about because he's not getting those.
The mayor had, in this past year, started up a green team for the homeless as a way to assist in helping with the city parks crews and DPW crews clean up parts of the city, also put some money in the pockets of the homeless and gave them something to do during the day, essentially.
Is this correct, twenty-two, excuse me?
Twenty-three, twenty-three.
Oh, twenty-three, okay.
Oh, twenty-two, did you say twenty-two? Is it twenty-two? And that does have to, yes, twenty-two. Employed by a social enterprise.
Yes.
So the mayor has asked that that be restarted again. So this sets aside funding for, for us to be able to do that, working with Michael Baumann, who has transportation and has a relationship with many of the homeless people and had operated it previously to the mayor's satisfaction.
Does anyone have any questions on this one? Next one is number twenty-three. Twenty-three and twenty-four go in tandem. I sent out an email yesterday and I also put it in your boxes. So as I mentioned, Commissioner Thomas approached me a couple of weeks ago after he did a quick calculation and found that there, just because of COVID over the past couple of years, we weren't able to spend some of the CDBG as efficiently and quickly as possible. And so we were, we were having, going to be struggling in meeting that criteria if we didn't spend a certain amount of money by the end of January. I kind of looked at it.
By the end of January.
Yes, at the end of January. So I took a look at that and also took a look at and remembered some of the things that you had asked of me when I was down here last time, trying to pay for some things out of ARPA that we wouldn't have to pay out of the general fund. I D, Station One, Whitesboro Street, the overages that we're going to have there. We need an air handler unexpectedly at UPD maintenance facility. Our Barrick Street neighborhood streetscape came in, about six hundred thousand dollars over budget. We, we got the fountains going down at Liberty Bell Park, thought we could use that out of ARPA, and in turn, kind of switched that out with some of the CDBG money. So these two transfers kind of go hand in hand. And so I don't know what questions you might have on, on any of this, but that was my thought process, ran it by the mayor and actually all the department heads. When we do this, I work with Mike and Brian, I don't do it alone.
Yeah, and I spoke to you on this, and basically, there's so much funding that we have, we have to use it or lose it.
Yes.
So we may as well use it on these projects.
Yes.
Therefore, saving money on the ARPA end of it, and we can use it for different projects down the road, correct?
Yes.
Pretty simple.
Because of ARPA, we're not under the same time constraint.
Not as stringent, no.
Right. We're not, we're not up against that deadline.
Well, this CDBG money has to be spent by the end of January. So we're right now, our engineering team's doing an awesome job, they're out putting sidewalks everywhere and ADA compliance. We have turnout gear for the fire department, it's already been ordered, so it really is the check. We can't, we can't write the check until we do this. The Kemble Street Park came in over budget, the mayor wanted to add some additional amenities to it, so it wasn't so much about Councilman Irving, he did go over his two hundred thousand dollar budget, but the mayor wanted to add some additional things there. And we did go over in paving this year, paving cost, it was, it was relative to gas prices. And we did do a couple of extra roads that the mayor heard from the council needed to be done, and he agreed with you, so we did add a couple of extra roads. So that's kind of our thought process.
Yes. I had a request and they, they took care of the request, it was up in North Utica, and they took care of a short roadway up there, which is very thankful and grateful for that.
So does anybody have any questions or want any updates on anything?
Now this, yes, this has nothing to do with grants or anything like that, like that were awarded to some of the bidders, like Bowers and all that, those pilots, this has got nothing to do with that, right?
It's got nothing to do with that.
Okay. Where are we with all that, with all that stuff? Does that have, do we have anything to do with any updates on that?
On the Bowers properties?
Yeah. Are those projects going on still and everything?
There is limited movement in some of the properties, the mayor is on top of it and is frustrated with the lack of progress and has reached out to them to try and move them along.
I mean, it's only been eight years. Do you think you can get them back here to kind of explain where they are with Colver Street? I mean, the Kemp building, I mean, the last time they were here, I mean, nothing's changed in a year and a half since they gave a proposal.
Is the same thing with like the Kennedy, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to go off.
That's okay.
I didn't really understand though. The, we're talking about switching funding, like when they came here for the Kennedy garage, I thought everything that they did was excellent, I supported all of it, but I see a lot of it now. Like I have a place in my area on Bleeker Street that is, it's a terrible eyesore, it just was coming up Genesee Street here, we got a terrible eyesore over there. And I, I'd just like to know, you know, we have all, we made all those tenants, and I don't think that's Bowers, we made all those tenants leave that building, the Bella Regina building there or whatever.
The mayor building, no, that's not Bowers.
No, but I'm just saying, we made all those people leave those buildings, all those businesses, and I don't see anything happening with any of them. And like again, I'm sorry if I spoke out of line here, but I just want to make sure to kind of understand.
I can certainly provide the contact for the Bowers company to the city clerk and if you want to have her reach out and extend an invite to one of your future meetings to have them explain their progress.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Because I know about two summers ago, he actually stood right here and he said, we're going to finish the project on Bleeker.
Right.
And Culver, and I had a tenant, and they were ready to go, and it's still sitting the same as an eyesore there. So hopefully, but I got to ask you a question.
I think, I think pressure from this.
I have Licata's contact.
I've also been in contact with him, I don't mind reaching out.
I just have a question quickly. Let's say they don't finish these projects, the Kemp building and all that good stuff, and, and they just don't have the financing anymore. Could they, could we take that back as a city or how does it work?
Well, Kemp, we couldn't take back, that was a private sale, that wasn't a city-owned property that they purchased from us. The New Century building, they did purchase from us, and it does have a reverter clause in it. Nineteen hundred Bleeker Street, I would have to check the contract, that wasn't through the Urban Renewal, excuse me, Urban Renewal Agency because it's outside their borders. It was done through the IDA, I would have to check the contract, the sale, purchase and sale agreement to see if that had a clawback provision.
All right. Thank you.
Nineteen hundred Bleeker.
They just purchased ACS for three million dollars still.
So Brian, one other question on these pilot programs?
Not through the city.
Just in general.
Although I would have liked that.
Just a general question.
Of course, we would have to give the county a million.
On pilot programs, so if they do, we award them these money, this money to, you know, these pilots, if they're not doing that, do we at least get the pilot money back?
I can tell you that the IDA is also equally frustrated with the lack of progress and is starting to look at the pilots that have been awarded so far and is considering, if they haven't already taken action, is considering taking action.
So they can take that money back?
They can clawback, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselperson Al.
And require repayment.
Yeah, I've been meeting with them pretty often and I'm sure they'd be happy to come in, but whoever wants to extend, reach out to them, that's fine with me. But it's been simple things like, I've heard there was like a toilet shortage, I don't know how far that is of like those apartments upstairs and just sending a little mini school thing to big things, it sounds like, but I think the best, yeah, course of action, so just have an update in person.
Yeah, then they could see, we could see where they are.
And I think pressure from this body would help, might help move things along.
And you, one last thing, I, but, and you guys tell me if I'm wrong, but when they did speak here, wasn't it during the pandemic and they said they couldn't do nothing until the pandemic was over and they couldn't spend the money, so, I mean, we're way past.
What they said was, what they said was.
They owned these buildings for eight years.
They couldn't spend their own money, they had to wait, they wouldn't, they couldn't spend their own money because they had to wait for the DRI money to finish the project.
Okay.
And I spoke to someone in City Hall and I said, that may not be true, they had to finish, fix the, the building, send the money and the paperwork or whatever, whatever the cost was, and then they would get reimbursed.
But, but we are way past that now, right? From when they talked?
Yes.
They had to put their money up first.
Most grants, just like with the state, they don't, upfront money, right? You know, just similar with NEXUS, right? That's part of the whole, was there, right? So they have to, they have to get the work done. And they've got two separate grants going on, they've got DRI, but they also have, I think, a restored grant for nineteen hundred Bleeker.
Correct.
And so I.
Two million dollars.
Yes, and we've, we've seen a lot of email activity that they're frustrated by that, but that's part of the grant requirements, that's, that's the way it works.
Right, right.
And I, I just want to point out one thing, I think it's really frustrating for, for me to see that, you know, they've made these promises over the years, you know, prior, even prior to me leaving the council, that they were going to finish this work. And just in January of this year, they purchased the ACS building in a private sale for three million dollars. So they haven't finished any of the project work that they had for us, but yet are putting, you know, three million dollars towards the building that they don't have, so.
And that's something that we could address to whoever the representative may be. All right, let's start.
Those engineers is equally as frustrated as you are.
Yeah, I was told.
I actually, I have one more thing, I'm sorry. So the sale for the, for the Kennedy garage is, is done, they pulled out on that deal? Or is there, is there still a contingent sale on that?
No, there is, there were some issues with title that.
Right.
Been extensive. Extensive, so they're trying to resolve those and that has just been taking time, no fault of.
I think that we should really consider not following through with that.
There was a due diligence period, and I believe that due diligence period has expired. But now the onus is back on us because we started this exercise of getting clean title about eight months ago, and here we sit. There's so many easements over there with the sale and over the, over the past, I mean, since the, the early seventies, parcels were, were sold off and easements were let, and so the title company's having a very difficult time trying to get a clear title.
And I think this.
Plus it came from a bankruptcy in the first place.
Well, was there a lien on the actual parcel?
The, the company that was building the Kennedy garage in the first place went bankrupt and the city took it. So it's, it's very gray. And the biggest problem is all the easements of all the utilities go back and forth between the now hospital property and the city property. You know, there's common, the water comes from underneath, there's, there's a lot of issues. We've met for hours with both the guy that wants, will write the title insurance, that company, as well as the surveying company, and they've just had a really tough time with it.
Because they, the hospital owns Mohawk Hospital, and so as he said, the utilities, there's things in these easement that says, you know, the city will have an easement three feet around a water pipe. The water pipe doesn't, may exist or may not exist, and which water pipe are you talking about? So they're just trying to clear up the deal. But as it relates to Bowers explicitly, the mayor has asked Brian, and he did, I think you sent several letters regarding the due diligence period, and we haven't really heard much back, other than they intend to buy it. They, they need parking for the Kemp building, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think they're, they're a little far beyond their due diligence to, to start any, any process of the, of the work that they could.
It sounds like no matter who who's interested in doing it, you have a problem with it. Doesn't, this doesn't really sound like it's all Bowers, it sounds like it's on our end.
Oh, I mean, they have, they have parcels.
It is on our end.
We have to, we have to clear title to, to be able to sell it to them, so. But they do own seven, seven other properties inside the city that they haven't moved forward with it, so they can't use the excuse that they don't have parking for this one, when they've got, you know, nineteen hundred Bleeker Street, you know, this, this, you know, the old GE building, they've got a number of parcels, and again, haven't completed any of those projects and still just bought a building for three million dollars.
They bought the OD.
Yes, Observatory Dispatch, no kidding.
No, no.
The old GE building.
No, the guy that bought the princess.
The former one on the corner of Bleeker, Bleeker and Culver. They just bought ACS in a private sale on Bleeker Street, across from the Central Forest.
Let's get back on.
That includes the grocery store.
Let's get back on the city.
They've actually purchased several, so you may want to ask them if they come before you, how much they actually own.
Do you have a new LLC that I can look? All right, I'll email you.
All right, President Kalini just has a.
I only, I have one quick question about Mayrow, because Council features brought it up. Brian, I know we endorsed it through the office, did they receive the grant they applied for?
That was the restore grant, the, the state broke the restore grant into two phases, around one, or two rounds, I should say, round one and round two. They, they applied in round one. Round one has not been announced yet by the governor or her people. My understanding, as late as this afternoon, there was a Mohawk Valley Regional Economic Development Council meeting that I participated in by phone, and Mike Reeves from the SDC said, stated that those announcements probably wouldn't be made until late January. They've already actually opened round two, and then notice of intent to apply was due by the end of November, and with applications due at the end of January.
So for all intents and purposes, that project's going to be stagnant as well, basically. Okay.
All right, I just want to get back to the CDBG question. I know you said you had to have everything in by the end of January. Now, the project doesn't have to be finished by that, you just have to be.
I have the right to check, and so we can't, we can't prepay, so that's why I'm actually holding up Barrett Paving at the moment, paying them until this passes, and we also have a thirty day expiration of a substantial amendment that was advertised in the OD. And I picked projects that we would be paying bills during that period, to give a great example, we started the playgrounds over at Proctor Park, right? It's ninety percent complete, we'll be getting a bill for that, and we'll be paying them next month. So that's why I took it out of ARPA and put it in CDBG. So between that and we, just if we did sidewalks, we'll be doing Chanser Park next spring. So Austin has been working on the sidewalks around Chanser Park, there are two sidewalks that were planned for Culver, he just did those last week. So when all those bills hit, I'll have that CDBG money ready to go, so it will all be expended by the end of January.
And as far as the fire, the carbon?
Culver's not done.
Did they start any projects?
Yeah, we did some ADA stuff, there's.
Like Station One, did they start the project yet?
They did, and I spoke.
And you're starting getting bills in?
Yeah, yeah, so we've been paying, and I talked to Piori and Rand Lee's on Monday, because I want to make sure that, you know, I have two hundred thousand bills that I can put towards that, and make sure that they will. So I said, save your bills up because I'll be paying them in January.
Thank you.
Is that playground going to be complete?
It will in the spring.
Okay, because if not, my daughter's going to be down here, because she's like, she's like trying to go play in it now, and I'm like, no, you're going to be.
It's all flexed in.
You can't go do it, so we got to make sure that's a priority, or you think I'm bad, you got to be my daughter.
The playground itself is complete, it's the containment that goes underneath it to make it safe.
I know, I see, yeah, it's beautiful.
Okay, great.
And we've got a splash deck running next door to us.
I haven't told her about that yet, it's pretty exciting.
All right.
Any other questions on that one?
No.
Okay. Next one we have is number twenty-five, and that's why we have Randall here today, we have Brian Witter from Paul Romano, and Stephanie, Stephanie did quite a write-up, so maybe you'd like to start and then ask them to participate in why we're doing this first question.
So there's two portions of the transfer, four hundred thousand is a projected estimate for work to be done at the Outfall, the railroad interceptor and the Grace Creek interceptor over by the treatment plant. This will help ensure that the maximum capacity of our sewage is getting to the treatment plant before entering the river. This is a crucial thing that needs to be done in order for us to be able to do our post-monitoring and metering in April to October of next year, so that way we can meet our long-term, long-term control projects and prevent ourselves from being in a consent order, essentially. Any other thoughts on this?
Well, maybe talk about why this is so important this year, so capacity.
Yeah, so what we've heard from the treatment plant operators, they have the ability to track when the, the gate at the overflow for O seven, of the railroad interceptor overflow, which is the combined sewer overflow is permitted. When it rains, the overflow, the punctured sewage goes out of that overflow, that's perfect. Treatment plant operators have the ability to track when that gate opens and closes. They also know when they have excess capacity at the plant, and what they're noticing is they have lots of capacity at the plant and that gate is opening, which means there's a restriction there that is forcing the flow out to the river instead of going to the treatment plant for treatment. So we came up with a way to do some slight modifications inside some of those structures to essentially double the capacity that can go to the treatment plant for treatment. Treatment plant still has the ability to throttle flow when they're at capacity, which will essentially back up and overflow, but that's all planned. This will make sure that we can get as much as possible to the plant for treatment prior to overflowing out the, out the. Fairly minor modifications, but very complicated in terms of bypass pumping, it has to happen there in order to do the project safely for the workers to go inside and do it.
I think it would be good to mention that when it does overflow in a rain event, it's diluted.
Yes, it is combined and it's not.
I can see Celeste over there looking at me, she's giving me an evil eye.
If we, if we can maximize what we're sending to the plant, now the backups are happening because the plant is telling it to do it, instead of right now, the city's, the water's automatically going to the river when it reaches that threshold. So it, it's better for our sake to prove that the county is, is at least, it's reaching the plant, and then the plant is the one saying, we've reached maximum capacity for our primary and secondary treatments can take, and then it will surcharge back, which will significantly minimize, I mean, the, the amount of overflows we're getting right now is, is very well controlled, especially with all of the projects that we've done in the last seven years of sewer separations. We've hit West Utica, Erie Street, over in East Utica, Mortimer, multiple phases, the sewer separation on A nine point one right here on Risky Boulevard, so we've done a lot of separating that, we are barely hitting maybe two hours of overflow total in a year, or in a month, rather, but when those heavy rains come, if we can maximize what's being treated, it will help validate all of the efforts that we've been making in creating a separated system.
And this became fairly urgent just recently because of a couple of things. We have, so the long-term control plan has an end date in the, in the speed department, the city's plan. That requires us to do monitoring to show the effectiveness of all the separation projects that Stephanie talked about, to show that we're capturing as much as we can within the, within sewer system. That monitoring starts in April and extends through like October of this year. We need to have this repaired, completed by then, so that we get a true picture of what we're capturing, so we can get the magic on. It also maximizes the, the split flow concept at the treatment plant, which was the city's portion of the work that happened at the, at the treatment plant. That's what we're running now, so we want to give them as much as we can and force it through.
Okay.
There's a lot there, does anybody, does everybody, so basically in wet weather, when the flows are up in the sewer system, all the city flow is not, the plant has more capacity to take more city flow. And so this project is going to allow that extra flow to get there that they're not seeing right now.
Would that, would that ease a lot of the overflow, like the sewer overflow and stuff?
Well, we'll have, yeah, that.
To be able to take it.
Right, so then, it, less will be backed up in going out these overflows, you know, so the more that goes to the plant, the less that goes out these, you know, these overflow structures that are there to, to take care of the kind of the backwatering, you know.
Counselperson Frank.
So, right, so there are a couple of things that were, I mean, there are a number of things that we're trying to avoid here. One, obviously, we're trying to avoid as much as possible untreated sewage going directly into the Mohawk River. And we also want that when that does have to happen, it goes in as diluted as possible, as Stephanie said. But we're also, the bigger picture is that we're doing everything we can to avoid being under a consent decree, correct?
Correct.
And this is, this is a really important, timely, urgent thing in order to keep us out from under a consent decree, which would be a really big burden for the city to bear.
Absolutely, I have to remind you that the, the county is under a consent order.
Right, the county is under a consent order, we're not. So that leads me just to a very general question, I think that it is to Stephanie, which is that roughly speaking, how much more separation do we have to do as a whole in the city? I know that's a, but like.
Yeah, I think we've captured a lot of, of the prominent areas. We're doing an outfall extension in the summer out on the Mohawk River to help with the hospital, storm water. We have a couple other little areas, but at this point, in, in terms of the long-term control plan, we've exceeded the expectations and requirements, and we've probably done at least two additional projects to help ensure that that capacity is met. There are still. There are still some areas in the city that are combined, but the intention here is that moving forward, for example, Park Ave, we're adding a storm sewer, so we're, we're, we're taking, we've created a good foundation, and now it's a matter of just tying it a little further as it seems fit, especially with as additional, um, projects coming into play. I don't remember what that building is.
That's the art building.
The art building? So I want to make sure they have.
Art space, art space.
That their storm and their sewer are going to be separated.
We're installing the Park Ave storm sewer.
So we're putting ourselves in a position where we can do that separation sort of at a time when it most makes sense, such as we've got a big development going on, or we're rebuilding a road, et cetera.
To put it in the perspective, I think it was maybe fifteen years ago, we had seventy-six combined sewer overflows. We're doing rain events, if the sewage, um, exceeded capacity, it was flowing into the storm line and then going directly. And now we're down to thirty-two.
Okay.
So we started with the larger ones, we just eliminated, um, our, one of the major ones, one forty-two, last December. That was right on Risky Boulevard in West Utica. Three years ago, we eliminated CSO one twenty-seven, which was on Arthur Street near, um, Conlon. So all of the projects were to eliminate the largest ones, and then we worked down. So some we can't inevitably eliminate, but what we are doing is building the rear wall up higher. So now it holds more capacity before it goes over. So in areas where we can't eliminate, we are definitely reducing.
Okay, alright, thank you.
I have another question. This, this obviously causes flooding in certain areas, correct? Does, does it cause flooding? What I'm getting at, we have a, we have a, what, two hundred fifty thousand, five hundred thousand, whatever in our flood mitigation, uh, fund? I mean, maybe we can help them in that respect as well, maybe if we're not going to use that money, thank God we haven't had any major floods, could we help them if it's causing flood? But it's not causing flooding then.
You still want to keep sewers separate.
It's really a separate, it's really a separation.
The sewers, that's what they're mandated under.
In terms of what you're talking with rain events and individuals backing up, we're talking on the system as a whole. So it's not, the overflow to the river isn't affecting people's basements. But for the situation that you're explaining, I think a big thing that we want to try to emphasize is that in combined areas especially, there's a lot of houses that are grandfathered in, where their roof drains are connected to their lateral. So a lot of times when people back up, it's assumed it's the city, but it could also be, if our pipe is at full capacity of sanitary and their, and their roof drains, the waters are tied in, their basement is going to get all of that water that their grubs are capturing. So it's, it's.
What are, do those buckets that we used to have?
The barrels.
The barrels, I mean, that was kind of, that was kind of a really important.
Yeah.
The barriers, not eliminating the excess flow going from off the roof into the water.
But even without those barrels, you could just have people putting their downspouts on their lawns, so it infiltrates.
And then it floods into their household.
And then it, they can either go, if they don't have it six feet out, it can, you know, possibly go back in, or then it turns into, they don't want the water in their, in their yards, and then it, so river in someone's backyard, so.
It's technically a code violation too, because you can, you can impact your neighbors.
The barrels are helpful for the heavy rainstorms, but for what you're saying, they're both valuable points, but.
I do know though, that in other municipalities, it's not legal to allow your downspouts to come into your laterals.
Well, the way, the way that it says is, it's a, it's, it, it has to be a municipal-approved drainage. So we could give somebody permission to try, tie into the lateral if we think the lateral can handle it there. But most of the time, um, they have to create somewhere for it to drain. Whether that's a, you know, a, a swale, or some kind of thing in their backyard, or if it's a bucket, or if it's, you know, they have to come up with a way that we approve for the water to drain.
And to everyone's point with doing this, another portion of this is the overage of the hundred thousand. This also does include areas, um, we're working with the county, the starch factory creek basin, all in East Utica on Culver Ave. During rain events, the sanitary line is showing substantial levels, um, quantity for flow. So part of this overage also is for metering to help validate what we're all talking about is how is rainwater impacting the sanitary system? So whether there's a catch basin on a dead end tied into the sanitary, we're trying to identify any parts to eliminate what you're expressing with the concerns of flooding within people's homes. So we've done, um, six months of multiple locations for metering to prove that during rainstorms, we're getting the quantity to kind of narrow and isolate where the problem is. Um, and that is part of this that I failed to put on here with the sanitary. I just got the bill after I wrote this, so I didn't want to resend it. That was like eight thousand, but it helps us find other ways that are outside of the obvious.
Thank you for the explanation. Councilman Beatrice?
Yeah, just a quick question, over on, on Leland Ave last week, is this part of the project where you had the company from, was it National Water? Where they, they were working over there, cleaning everything out, is that part of this too, last week?
On Leland?
Yeah, I think they were.
They're down by the treatment plant to, um, to do some of the O seven six work in preparation if this is approved.
So it's part of this, okay.
So they're ice, they're, they're opening up that manhole, so that way if this is approved, we're able to do the interior work.
Okay.
So right now, they're just setting up, so that way there's no delay in time.
That's the National Water Company it's called?
No, that's Central New York Construction, Vana.
There was.
National Water, I mean, was there maybe two or three weeks ago to investigate, to see what the conditions were to in, to enter those channels.
Okay, okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
And as part of this five hundred thousand, there's also a hundred thousand in there. As you know, we've been doing a lot of different work, and when we get out there and you open up the roads, just like what's happening over in Stubeck Park, we're finding things that happened many years ago that aren't on our maps. And when Stephanie was out, she was doing the Bleecker Street project, um, and found a ninety thousand dollar sewer problem right in front of Oskanee's. So we had to repair it, and so that's part of this five hundred thousand.
Yeah, it was, um, actually, what we thought was an abandoned line, because it was ninety-five percent full of grease. And so when we opened up the box culverts and saw that the flow, we di-test to make sure, just to be proactive, and found that it was in fact active. The reason why we had to move it is that the grade of the sanitary was hitting where the new box culvert was going. So we had to relocate that either way. It worked out that it was in rough shape and it could have used the repair. But the initial concern was that it was abandoned, and it really wasn't. So it just created some design changes, which thankfully we were able to minimize it. We only went back maybe a hundred and twenty feet, but it, it did put some delays on the project as well. And we've been working with codes about the grease.
I was just about to say, one day we're, we're going to have to figure out a better way to address grease traps throughout the city. I mean, there's no, the problem is there's no really good option.
It's probably really, I mean, you can't tell old grease or new grease, but I think between all the restaurants in there and then the reduced connections, there wasn't as much flow to wash out the line. So moving forward, it will all be resolved, but Bleecker Street definitely benefited from this improvement. We were able to put in pavers as well, other project, and isolate with CDBG money. So all together, everyone down there was very thankful for all of our efforts.
Councilperson Frank, yep.
Can we just, before, Bleecker Street was part of, we had cavitation basically at the old structure that was there, so. Putting the new box culvert, it keeps it in check with the rest of the system, so it was very.
Cavitation, now there's a word, I'm not familiar with, creating a cavity?
Just like, just like the bottlenecking that we're experiencing at O seven six, where now it's going over the flow instead. It's the same thing, what was happening was it was an arch sewer that then went to a brick, or, um, to a box culvert. And with that, it, it created capacity issues. At the time it was built, it was extremely oversized, but obviously, as we all know, the rain has been brutal, and those hundred-year storms are happening every five or ten years, so now that capacity was crucial. So in order to make sure there was no bottlenecking, we removed seventy-five feet of the arch sewer and put the box culvert in throughout the actual part of Bleecker Street. They previously did it, but at the time, they didn't need the capacity, so we just, they made the connection, um, thirty years ago, I think it was.
And it was observed problems, I mean, we just didn't.
Yeah.
We've actually flooded there, so.
And that's where those guys just coming through, and I don't know if it was price right, but the Oriental, um, store was having issues. So now all of those catch basins actually are properly tied in and functioning. And all of the electrical subways will no longer be sinking, and everything is resolved. Sidewalks are in good shape.
Old, old infrastructure, but.
It was on our wish list for a while, but now with the flooding, it proved to be very important, and.
Councilperson Frank.
So Heather, I have a basic sort of financial question about this. So we're talking about moving five hundred thousand out of the sewer fund balance, and we're told by the controller that we have seven hundred and forty thousand dollars in this, so we're really getting awfully close to having.
Well, I don't know, I will just say, garbage in, garbage out. What was the question that you asked the controller? No, I, I'm reading from the report, I didn't ask. Oh, so that, okay, so garbage in, garbage out. What that report does include is what is owed to us. Okay, okay. So we borrow between funds routinely, and if you were to look at, that's why I included in my memo, um, the last page of my memo, I included the financial, the copy of the financial statement, Mark III first point one, because we don't have Mark III first point two. And there's nothing to make this here other than this. And if you see A, I take the cash and the receivables, and I minus the, what's owed, and that's where I come up with two point six. So cash is not a good indicator of fiscal health.
Right, so it, the cash is seven hundred and forty, but the actual is two point six.
Yes, the actual, they call it that position, because it's a business-type activity, but basically.
Okay, Councilwoman Yola?
Question. You know the gallons that were diverting out of the sewer plant? Do you think we can save some money with the county, maybe you can tell me how many gallons, so we don't have to go to the, um, what do you call that? Sewage plant, maybe it'll give us a break on our county sewage tax, you know that they've been raising all the time? Because we're giving them less kookoo on the way down, so.
Well, what we're doing is.
I like your style, Frank.
Taking out a massive amount of rainwater over the years, is our city's permit required?
Yes, I got that we're required to it, but of course, the city's paying for the sewage plant that they just put in.
But what we are doing is trying to get, and we all determined we're about forty percent of the tax base that they're collecting.
Maybe we could just figure that out.
So we're trying to find creative ways to utilize that, whether it's improvements with our GIS, finding areas that we can then combine and separate. They have a powerful team that goes out and gets surveyed and all the functions, so I think fighting for a cheaper bill is probably not something that they're going to go for, but finding things that their departments can help us with is something that's on the table that we're actually trying to.
Yeah, so what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing, Frank, is you want retro payments for all the buckets we weren't dumping, yeah.
Always trying to look for some.
But also, this is infiltration and stuff from our storm system, they don't charge us for it. We're trying to get it out, though.
And we've been.
There's not a meter on it, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yeah, there's no meter on everything, eh?
We're all making sure that they're doing their due diligence.
Alright, any more questions for engineering, I think you've covered a lot, and was very good, very informative. Thank you.
We have one more transfer.
Yep.
Um, that's post-ordinance number twenty-six, this has to do with parks. So, uh, ENA passed hiring, um, Bill Holsteg to come back, he was retired from our DPW, to come back and assist with plowing operations as it relates to the parks and anything else that would need to be done for a five-month period. Something Dave Short felt strongly was needed, um, and so ENA cast him, this is simply a transfer to make payment to him.
Heather, and actually, Councilwoman Frank, can I just, I'll comment that bit? ENA had a line, ENA did not know what was being wired.
Yes.
Well, I brought it up, I did, I did.
Yes.
There was, I, yeah, so there wasn't much discussion.
Those are two separate issues, I'm just throwing that out.
So basically, you created another position temporarily throughout the winter months, assistant plowing all our blockways and all that, okay. I know, I believe, I think the parks, do they take care of the, like, the aprons on the fire department as well and all that? Because they have the smaller equipment. I don't know, DPW does that or?
They do all our parks, they do, they do a lot, because they can do, they do a lot of our streets that the bigger trucks can't do too.
And, and I'll be back here shortly, I have to do another transfer for seasonal laborers. We struggled this year really, really badly with finding employees. And showed at the beginning of the season, and so I need to move some money around out of salaries, that's where this money is coming from. So I'll be back probably in two weeks as it relates to moving seasonal money, or moving wage money into seasonals.
Any other questions, anyone?
Anything else on, anything else going on in the city?
We're here.
We're here.
We're opening a whole can of worms there, brother.
I mean, if you want to get into it, we've got about ten more minutes left, I mean. Here we go, you missed.
Here we kind of just left.
I don't, I want an update on Bailey View, I mean, that's.
Well, I know, and that's, that's why.
I was, I was going to let it go to maybe next meeting, to figure out where you guys are going to be, but.
So, so I'll just start, and then Mike, you can pop in here. So we, contemporaneously, we put out the bid for the building, which we were told would be, was estimated by the architect, feels they're on two and a half million. And I think, actually, Councilwoman DeBrango, you brought this up several months ago, because I got a little frustrated and said it's supposed to be two million. I doubt the funding that was set aside. Mr. Savara felt, felt some confidence that that would be what the bid came in at. At the same time, um, a bid was put out for operations of the clubhouse. And it was done purposely, the mayor felt strongly about this, that whoever was going to be bidding on that building understand exactly what was going to happen in that building, because we're, we're looking at making, expanding it a little bit and adding a grill room, which would mean that whoever runs that building would also have to run the grill room, and they would also get to pay for utilities, more of a portion of utilities. No, grill room where, I'm sorry, I mean to drop downstairs in the. Upstairs, upstairs.
This is, this is in addition to the side, so it would be on the upper level. It, it changes the configuration of the building.
What's a grill room, where you just grill?
It's a little lunch bar, snack bar.
It's a patio for the golfers.
It's not a patio, it's actually interior, there's a patio off the back.
I was told the sports bar, you know what I?
Listen, when Jeff, when Jeff does the, the outside, I mean, he brings the grill outside, stuff like that, I mean, it is nice. It would be nice to be able to, when you have outdoor functions, to not be able to have to use the entire facility, to just use it out there. I mean, I understand the idea and thought process.
That was the concept, right?
I just wanted to make sure I was understanding what.
There's a covered patio, there's extra bathrooms, so, I mean, and there's updates to the, the existing building. Needs a new roof, it needs new windows, I mean, so we're addressing. Oh, yeah. Yeah, it does.
So when the price came in at five point one million, we were all startled, startled, because that's not what they estimate was. And so the mayor, we, we sat down as a group, how can we get that number down? You know, it's not probably going to be two million like I would like, but how do we get that number down? So we met with the architect, he's, he's been working on it, it's going to come back, I think the end of next week or so.
I met with him today, and within two weeks, we should be back out to bid again.
So, so what hap, and I'm just going to be honest and tell you that, now, the board of contractors is applying that, we all kind of missed it. What should have happened was the, when we realized that, we should have put out an extension on the operations portion. And we, none of us, I, I'm as equally guilty, I mean, we were, we were all part, none of us really thought of it. We're, we're, we're doing twelve-hour days and eight hours, and we're running around here working weekends, and we didn't do it, and.
So can I, can I ask a question to that? And that's, and that's fine, I mean, obviously, that's, nobody expected it to be five million dollars, I mean, is the architect, how, and how much is in, in extra costs is it now costing us to redo the designs for that? I mean, because at some point in time, we have to just say, listen, you know, this isn't, this isn't what's working out for us. I mean, and obviously, it's no individual person that can, you know, as a crystal ball, can determine what, what's going on. But I guess my, my, my question is, is obviously an air to what the cost would be, if the, the only bidder that bid on that parcel was one individual, why wouldn't that person be given the opportunity to adjust their bid, um, before you went out and rebid that process?
That's what the extension would have been for.
Right, but what I'm saying is that they.
You're talking about two different things, and I'm not really clear.
Okay, alright, let me start.
You're talking about the management contractor, you're talking about the building.
Because according to, it's going, it's, both of them are going back out.
They're both going to go back out?
Yes.
The, the one, the individual that submitted for the management proposal, we, we received the bid, it was opened at this table, it was not read, it was not distributed to anybody. We kept it upstairs in our lock cabinet, and we sent it back to him, so I have no idea what his proposal is. So he could submit the same proposal when we do it again, it has not been read by anyone, so.
His proposal was based on the specs from the first time.
What we have, and now we're changing it, we're changing.
Smaller, less amenities, or whatever it may be, and now, now he may have to submit that bit again, but you're right.
So I guess to my point is, if you haven't read his bid, and he was the only bidder, then why not give him the opportunity to bid on that if he was the only bidder at the time? I mean, because now what happens, right, but listen, so now, I guess what I, my problem is, is that he did put in a proposal, was going to finish, that was going to put in whatever amount of money, or whatever not amount of money he was going to put in, that nobody read the proposal. Why wouldn't you curtail that to say, hey, listen, he was the only bidder, we screwed up, we'll give you the opportunity, but if it's not.
But now we have to go into negotiations with him, because he would come back. If we, if we get rid of the grill room, he's going to say, why would I bid that if I don't have to man it, I don't have to heat it? And so that was part of the struggle.
I guess, to me, I guess it would be more fair to give a negotiation. I guess, to me, I guess it would be more fair to give a negotiation, especially knowing that he was the only bidder and the bid was out for that amount of time. I mean, to, to, to make good in a situation that, that was wrong, not on his part, I guess, on the, you know, whoever's card it would may be, it's not, that's not the issue, would, would be to, to give that negotiation, say, listen, we don't like your proposal. Guess what? Now you have no other choice but to rebid. I mean, that, that would be in good conscience, something that I would think the city in good faith could negotiate, could negotiate with him in regards to that.
Councilman Mielo.
I just want to resolve this. At this time, Mr. Burrell and that person's attorney, they're working out the specifics right now, Samantha.
Right, but he's still got a letter saying that he had to rebid on a parcel. I mean, I guess if he didn't get a lawyer, I mean, now you're.
Not sent the letter. They're working it out.
I know, but what I'm saying is, I guess, is now it's incurred cost to the person that he now has to get an attorney, which he would have to anyways. I guess now you're talking about a business that, you know, has now, will now not have anybody in there during the most important part, which, which is the holiday season. Getting into the.
His present contract goes to Mark.
Right, but.
Once they get the bid. Time out, time out.
That was on him, though.
Time out. Just let, let me say, wait, let me say, let me say one thing. The facility's got to be shut down at some point. I would prefer over the winter, right? Because obviously, your business isn't, you're, you're part of a golf course there. So at that point in time, I think, I think it's only fair to let whoever's there now, if it's Daniels, the timeframe is going to be shut down, so he can't book any parties from that point on. But maybe, God willing, you know, if he gets it himself, I'm not pushing for anybody, but he does have a great product. I've been there, sort of, you know, he made it what it is today, so if, if he gets the bid, that would be great. I think it's a good asset to the city. But let me, let me say this. If, if, if we have a timeframe that at least he could go by, let's say, maybe March or April, whatever may be the, the end date of this project, now he can start booking parties from that point forward, you know, because he does have to pay the bills as well to back to the city, or whatever he bids, you know, whatever the bid comes in at. So just, just a thought, that's all.
So I just want to say one thing on, on, on this whole thing, there was a deadline on a bid, correct? Nobody else bid. He bid. What is the major purpose of, he's the, the person inside operating the venue, which really has nothing to do with the construction of the new thing, except possibly, you know, a grill room or maybe not an elevator.
Yeah, more equipment.
Okay, but if you, we, he's there, and the bid was given to him, and we talked to him the way we're talking at the table, and at least we could keep it going. I mean, longer this is going to go.
Well, because Joe, and I don't.
Wait, wait a second. That building is going to be dark, and we're going to, I mean, obviously, when he has parties there, we make revenue.
But Joe, but Joe, here's the thing. No, but when you, when you substantially change the specs on the bid that you put out, you have to put it back out to bid. So if, if you owned a road paving contract, and I told you I'm doing $10 million worth of roads, and you don't have the equipment for 10 million, but you bid anyway, then I switch it to two, right? Well, maybe somebody else would have bid it if it was two.
Yeah, but that's, but it's two different things. He was bidding for the inside of the restaurant, not for the outside.
Which is a different thing now.
What would happen if there was a change order, and he was already approved? So say, say you hit $5 million for the contract that was going to get in, and then, guess what? The contractor came back and said, guess what? Here's an additional $1 million change order that it's going to be costing in addition to the project. Now you go and you rip the bid away from him in the middle of a project because it costs more and renegotiate with them? I mean, either or, the, the, the situation, it isn't good and it's unfortunate, and that's, and that's part of the problem. Because guess what? Change orders do happen all the time. We've seen it with the police department, the fire department. I mean, and that, who's to say whether it was in favor of him or not in favor with him? The way that it worked out wasn't, wasn't fair, I guess, in my opinion.
I agree, but the, the change order would affect the, what the facilities in the building were. It would just cost more.
But that's what they're saying, that the additional cost, I mean, they did it for the RFP, thinking it was going to be 2.5 million dollars. Well, guess what? It came back $5 million. What happens if they approved his contract, and then the city, and then the contractor came in and said, guess what? We, we've already halfway through the project. It's now costing six. So you're going to say, oh, I negotiated with you. I'm going to increase your cost.
But that's different than if the contractor said, I'm building an extra ruin.
But, but it's not. It's not. It's, it's the same.
Let's get this back under control. Heather, go ahead.
One last thing on this. Mr. Daniels was willing to close at the end of December, and, and that was worked out between lawyers, and we do appreciate that. We, we, I mean, mayor appreciates that, because we really thought we could be in there by now, doing foundation work. And we're, we're as upset as you are about this. We really are. We had no idea it was going to be this expense, and we were supposed to have plans and bids, you know, a month and a half earlier, and that that was the goal. You know, so that during the winter months, that that place would be shut down, you know, we'd have a great building come middle of next summer. I don't know that that's going to be met down. So I think it's, the onus is on us to kind of get back to what our timing is, and that's another thing. We could award it to them and tell them, guess what? You think you're opening in April? You're not. I mean, that's part of our problem, too.
The problem is, it's going to be a construction zone.
Is there a way to allow that?
Honestly, I wasn't in favor of even putting now, but I was overruled.
Which I, which I agree. That would have made most sense.
I'm with you.
I mean, we were kind of stuck in the same situation with Bowers, which you make the announcement for the, for the building, the parking garage behind us, and now here we are, and that, I mean.
For the record, I wasn't in favor of that either.
We're stepping out of ourselves.
Just jump off the ship, Mike.
He's going. He's going. He's got one year, one year left. He might have early retirement.
Councilman Williamson, you have the floor.
I have one question on this. Now, since we're being delayed now for some reason, can you be extended throughout the winter there?
And I think that goes to what Councilwoman Mielo is talking about.
Because that way you can plan parties like in April and.
He already, he already had a month, a month at least, a middle one.
I know, but I mean, since it's not going to, it's not going to break ground until next winter, maybe.
Well, that's a good thing. Negotiating in good faith, I guess. All right, anything else?
If he was, he hit it to December, he's going to be done in November. I mean, he shouldn't be talking about any of this, to be honest with you publicly.
All right, is anything else? Okay, we're good?
Yep.
All right, we're going to take a break, and then we'll kick it back up at six. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
I'd like to start with our first proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Your Honor. Okay, councilmembers, we're starting a little after six on December 7th, 2022. Our first piece of legislation is sponsored by Councilwoman Aiello. It's no parking at all times. Councilwoman Aiello, would you like to give us a summary about this legislation?
Yeah, on Skyler Street, specifically, like, Sacco's locksmith there, they have an entranceway to the back of their parking lot on the side of Skyler Street, and a lot of people have been blocking it, so UPD went over there, they did a study, and they looked, and they said, yes, this should be a no parking zone. So now we're actually going to have signage to support that.
Any discussions? Okay, discussion is closed on ordinance number one. Next ordinance is ordinance number two, sponsored by Councilwoman Cosimo Testa. Intersections where stops required, would you like to give us a summary about this?
I get it. So, UPD had given me legislation to put stop intersections on the west and east corner of South Street. When we were going through the legislation on E-code, we found an ordinance that said that there was a four-way stop. We weren't able to find any of the legislation, there was no date attached to it. So, just to be on the safe side, we rescinded any previous ordinance that had section 2-16-358 scheduled intersection where stops are required at South and Ontario. Four-way stop at each intersection, and just replaced it with the same thing, just to be on the safe side, that we're legislated correctly for, and it matches what's on E-code.
But if the legislation is already in there, aren't you just asking?
Because we can't find the ordinance when it was ever passed.
But the legislation is in there, you don't have to worry about the ordinance.
We have no idea where the legislation is, Frank, we looked through all the books, and we can't find the legislation that specifically states.
But that's fine, Samantha.
No, it's not fine.
It says four-way stop intersection.
Right, but how do you know it's on E-code, it's appropriate? You don't.
It's on E-code, isn't it? So all you had to do is call markup and get the signs put up.
Right, but if there's no legislation attaching to that, that's there.
There's thousands of pieces, there's thousands of these.
Where? Do you want to go through all the books from 1969 together?
There's thousands of these without attaching to it.
Do you want to go through the legislation from 1969?
Again, you're just being redundant.
Frank, if there's not an ordinance that we were able to find that supported what was on E-code, we have to rescind and replace.
It wouldn't get the E-code out of ordinance, Samantha. Isn't that the way it's done?
What enough? When was it done? Go through the books and let me know if you find it.
That's a question that I need to answer.
Then I think that you need to stop arguing and just rescind and replace, because it really doesn't make a difference of the argument you're trying to make right now.
First off.
At all, to be honest with you.
First off, the argument is very simple, it's already there, and all you had to do is ask, put the signs up.
When you go find it in the books, let me know, because we weren't able to find it.
Councilman Frankie DeBranco.
I'm reading this here, and it's rescind and replace, it's the same, isn't it the same?
It's the same thing again, she's just being redundant, that's all she's doing.
That originally was passed, because right now, if I would have passed what the police department just gave me, it was for
There is no passing.
It was for stop signs, because even the police department couldn't find the legislation that was originally attached to it. So that's why, just to be on the safe side.
No harm, no foul?
There's not, that's what I'm saying, you're making a big deal about it, it's not a big deal whatsoever, at all, to be quite honest with you.
Well, if you would like to reaffirm what's already there, Sam, and then put a date on it, then the Councilman Miola.
That's exactly what we're doing.
It's a little different than ordaining it, so if you want, if you would like, Samantha.
You're not making any sense. How do you reaffirm legislation, you have to do it by ordinance?
May I speak, please?
Can I have a point of order on the floor, because this is out of
I am the one running the meeting, Sam.
I am, and I'm going to put a point of order on it, because you're totally out of line.
Okay, let me explain something. If you would like to rescind the statement in our traffic code, section C, where it states Ontario Street and South Street, southeast, southwest, and west-side corners, which of course is inappropriate, it doesn't even talk about all the corners, that you can rescind. And then you can reaffirm South and Ontario four-way stop. If you would like to amend that properly, because what you're doing, okay, is you don't even know if that section's in there. Or you're guessing. Now, if our clerk turned around and didn't find the section that you're trying to rescind, all sections of it, she may not find it. You have to be specific on what section you want to remove, because what she's going to do in our documentation is going to say rescinded for this council meeting. Now, would you like to reply to that?
No, because you're totally incorrect. That's exactly what this legislation states.
All right, councilmembers, it's already having a four-way stop, would you like to refer this committee until our corporate counsel or somebody to look at it?
No, it's ridiculous, you're out of control.
Why? It is a four-way stop already.
No, it's not. There's only stop signs up on the north and east, and north and south side.
I'm going to refer this to committee until our corporate counsel.
You want to vote against it, then you go explain to the neighbors, because I'm going to put this out.
It's already there, Sam, all you got to do is put the signs up.
Councilman Miola, point of order. There has not been an ordinance that we have been able to find that supports a four-way stop from 1969 to 2022 in the books.
When you say "we," it's UPD?
And the city clerk, we went talking about it, just found it. Where? Go find the ordinance number out of the books, please.
Specific date and time?
I'm begging you. The ordinance, the original ordinance that was passed for a four-way stop.
You can check each and every one of these if you'd like.
Yeah, go ahead. We did, we went from 1969 all the way to 2022. Well, we did.
Why don't we let the clerk speak?
We Let him vote it down. Jesus.
All right, let's move to the next piece of legislation.
Unbelievable.
Our next piece of legislation is sponsored by Councilman Irving, intersection where stops required. Councilman Irving, would you like to give us a summary about this one?
Yeah. Yeah, what we found out was, when they removed the traffic light, and they put up stop signs, we never did legislation for the stop signs. So that's what the legislation is about, to make sure that we're covered as far as the stop signs that we have up there.
Did you get the temporary stop signs put up?
Yeah.
And you see, it's, our clerk's now adding when we're doing this, it's added 12/7 at the bottom of this note, so we can reference that, that you reaffirmed at the legislation. All right. Our next piece of legislation is proposed resolution number four, it's Commissioner Deeds. Walensky. How's we may have wronged, any questions with this Commissioner Deeds, any discussions? No? Next Commissioner Deeds is for Michael Ruggiero. Any discussion? Discussion is closed. Next one is for John Gouf. Gouf? Golf? Uh, any discussions? Discussion is closed. Next one's for Ruth Concepcion. 10 Memorial Parkway, any discussions? Next one is for Anthony Leon Jr. No discussions. Next one is for Nadine Uzick. No discussion. Next one is for the famous Joseph Beatrice. Anybody opposed today? Nope, that's not, all right. Next one's for me, probably got all no votes. Well, what we're doing, the county wanted a different type of verbiage, so we're Next one, Venice Irving. Next one, Robin Furmaster. Number 14, Frank DeBranco. Number 15, Andrew Castella. Number 16, Martha Ann Markowitz, Westmoreland, she is a county worker. Right now, we're also specifying if they're county workers for the positions, if they lose their job, like, of course, they can't utilize it within the county anymore, but only within the city limits. And I think they might even, their Commissioner Deeds may come void too also. Next piece, number 17. If possible, I'd like to amend this piece. Hollingsworth and Jefferson Ave, one-way stop northwest on Hollingsworth corner, on the corner of Hollingsworth, I'm sorry. One-way stop northwest corner of Hollingsworth. Would you please add that, clerk? It's more specific.
Are you amending this to original code, or are you adding it to it?
This is being added. You see the word "added"?
Oh, yeah, I know, but it says be amended. It says be amended to include the following.
Yes.
So it's being added.
What we're doing, Samantha.
I want to be specific, I just want to make sure that we're being specific.
To be more specific out of what we're doing is, we're adding, was being added today, and we're deleting whatever legislation that's being doubled, or, you know, we're making more specific on our
So did you rescind the original, did you rescind the original ordinance?
There wasn't, there's not one in it, the traffic light is there.
Do you have it? You don't want your voice broken.
Okay, I have seven years, huh? Next piece of legislation, Rosemont and Mohawk Street, we're putting a one-way stop sign, would you please add that also? One-way stop southwest corner of Rosemont. It's going to be amended on the floor, or, Mr. President, you can read into the record.
Sure.
Okay. Next piece of legislation, this was Sherman Drive and Mohawk Street. Clerk, it reads in our stop sign thing, it says Mohawk Street first and Sherman Drive. So you can reference the deletion northeast corner. We have to rescind that.
Is there a stoplight there?
Nope, there is a stoplight, this is for a stop sign. This was an old piece of legislation that was sitting around, and we're cleaning it up.
I know, but can you tell me what ordinance you're rescinding?
Mr. Aiello.
Yes.
All these ones, you're not designating the, you know, the northeast, going southeast.
Yes, I did.
You shouldn't have that at all.
I'm fixing it now, Your Honor, probably, you didn't hear me, I'm sorry.
Guys, the only one in the discussion to fix that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So the one we're rescinding, because there's a traffic light on, you know, Sherman Drive and Mohawk Street. Clerk, when you do the clip note at the bottom, you could put the, just rescind and the date. Instead of putting the word "added" in there, because it may confuse people.
I just have one question, what are you rescinding, what ordinance are you rescinding?
The ordinance that states in E-code that there is a stop sign on the corner of Mohawk Street and Sherman Drive.
What's the ordinance number?
It's a schedule, that is the ordinance, it just lists off each of those.
So the same thing that I did prior is not, is okay to?
I'm not referring, I'm not referring to that.
Same thing.
Nothing else.
Same section and everything. 2-16-358, intersections where stop required, you're rescinding it. So if this is okay, to not have the original ordinance number, then neither should the piece of legislation.
If you'd like to compare yours to that one, I will do that in a few minutes.
Yeah, sounds great.
No problem at all.
Thank you.
What corner is it again?
Sherman Drive and Mohawk Street.
You got to do it for one, you got to do it for the other. Same thing. I'm sorry.
Whatever stop signs there, you're going to take out.
No, no, Frank, there is this traffic light there, but there's legislation that states there's a stop sign. So we have to remove this legislation that states there's a stop sign.
Okay, got you.
Let's see, our next one, our supplements for board of estimates apportionment from 20 to 24, that's another one, we already discussed this in committee at a whole. 25, we stopped at 25, Joseph Beatrice, no, I'm sorry, 27. Proclamation recognizing Franco's Pizza, 50 years in business, would you like to give us a quick summary? Did I skip?
Yep.
That was another transfer.
Councilman, there's a piece in between the E&amp;A transfers, 21.
Okay, I'll go back to that, Joseph, you want to give us a quick summary?
It's a pizzeria, it's a famous pizzeria, it's been in my area since I was a kid. It was open in 1972. Anybody who's been in North Utica, or even around Utica, knows all about Franco's Pizza, and I just thought it was worthy of giving them some recognition. The owner is currently in Florida, and he's transferred the business to Mr. Dick Saldano, and his son took it over in the last 10 years, and it's still going very strong, and I just thought it would be nice to recognize him.
Thank you, Councilman Beatrice. Excuse that I skipped 21, Councilwoman Friend, you have an amendment for municipal contracts, would you like to give us a summary about that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Majority Leader. So this is a very simple but meaningful amendment. There is an apprenticeship training agreement in our code already under the awarding of municipal contracts that allows contractors to, that permits them to have apprenticeship training programs for contracts that meet a certain threshold, $250,000. These are just for municipal contracts. I would like to change the maze to a shall, so that we require such contractors to have these apprenticeship training programs. This is something which is enabled by state law. There is state code enabling this, and lots of other cities and counties already have these required apprenticeship training programs in place, Albany, Troy, Saratoga Springs, Erie County, I'm not remembering all the ones that I know about, and there are more than those. So I would, I'd like to introduce this on the floor, refer it to committee, and I asked Mr. DeBranco if we could have a committee meeting on Wednesday, January 4th, at 5:00 p.m.
Did you get that, clerk?
Wednesday, January 4th at 5:00 p.m. And I'd like to invite Mr. Bill Maxim and Mr. Deli Vargas, and whoever else they deem appropriate to agree with them. And I believe that the deputy clerk has their contact information. So Wednesday, January 4th, 5:00 o'clock, to discuss this. Yep.
Thank you, Councilwoman Friend. I think we're on number 28, did I skip anything else? No? Yes? Okay. Number 28, proclamation recognizing Todd Abraham. Councilwoman Cosimo Testa, would you like to give us a summary on this one?
Is it worded correctly? Just proclamations are okay to pass? No, I mean, Todd's an all-around great student, athlete, and I just, since he was just given a Division I scholarship to Binghamton, I thought it would be nice to have him in and show some proctor pride inside the City of Utica government, and recognize the hard work and dedication that he put in.
Any problems that go in full council on this?
I took you off of it.
That's okay.
You're on, oh, you're all on it.
Our next piece of legislation is, let's see, Cosimo Testa, Samantha, Cosimo Testa, Commissioner Deeds. Anybody opposed?
I just need a sponsor. And we got to wait the Thursday rule for it as well.
It says no. No Thursday rule on that one, same.
Oh, okay.
He's already got.
I don't even have a sponsor.
There's two on.
Markle.
Majority and minority.
And, let's see, two more pieces left, councilmembers. Number 30, resolution, sponsored by Councilwoman Friend, we're selling some beer Saturday night, December 17th, at the Utica Zoo. Hope everybody wants to go.
Yay beer.
Our last piece of legislation, resolution number 31, Commissioner Deeds, David R. Riffaro. I'm assuming that was the mayor, correct? Okay. We have a few minutes left.
Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. President.
I'd like to request that the council read and accept prior to the meeting, starting the mayor's message to the council. It's all pertinent to the legislation that we discussed in pre-meeting conference, and you know, per the usual order of business, I read it after we deal with the legislation, so we'll I just want everyone to check it out beforehand. Yeah. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anything else the council would like to discuss?
We might as well discuss the amendments, I mean, does anybody have any recommendations before we go into the 21st meeting? They have a committee meeting on the amendments for the ordinance to end the zoning code?
You're just asking for a committee meeting on the 21st?
I'm just asking if anybody has any recommendations now, in our committee meeting prior to the 21st, to figure out what we got to do, so we're not, you know, amending sections that night, and I think that we need to get this done.
Or the, did our council or corporate council get a chance to go over those the codes amendments? Stephanie? Judge?
Yes, I met with Judge earlier in the week, and went over the, my proposed comments with him, and we discussed and reviewed. So I don't know if you want me to do it, or Judge wants to go through those comments.
Are you prepared to discuss it now, or would you like to wait until the next council meeting?
Majority Leader, can I add one thing to this before?
Absolutely, Mr. President.
It's just procedural, there's two things, there's the amendments, right? But then also included in that public hearing is simply the renumbering, the two separate pieces for the zoning.
The renumbers in committee, the renumbers we voted on, and they're in a committee.
Well, technically, everything was called, the public hearing was called for everything.
Right.
But they're two separate issues, I just want to make sure we're only discussing the amendments right now.
No, it's the next council meeting.
Next council meeting.
Judge, are you prepared to discuss those amendments? Yes?
If you have the fact that the next meeting is the last meeting of the year, I think that, and we were prepared, Mr. Giorgio and I, who spent many, many, many hours going over these amendments, that you would discuss them tonight, and you would then only be discussing on the following meeting, what has been amended, or has been discarded.
Okay.
Or isn't going to come out.
All right.
Because I had to give fairness to you for time, that's the way to do it. Now, we have written down notes for every single piece of legislation that's included. And we reviewed them all, and we have a consensus on just about everything. There was one piece that, a couple of pieces that troubled Mr. Giorgio, and I'll let her, she found some conflicts with the language, and that's quite all right. But we're prepared to go from right through them, right through the, it's numbered, I think I have here number one through 29, I think it is. That's a lot of pieces of legislation.
Well, Your Honor, we could do a couple, maybe we can get through half of it tonight, if the council doesn't mind? Is the council okay with that, or would you like to wait until the next council meeting?
Either way, you have to have a committee meeting prior to the 21st.
Of course, but if we can get some discussions and
These have to get dealt with in a timely manner, because we're on a time constraint.
Let's start the process.
Would you like to start?
For the moratorium.
Is anybody opposed to start in the process?
No.
Okay, all right. Judge, let's start with, is it start with ordinance number six, amending 229?
I was talking about number one. Number one is the number one has to do with E-code.
I believe it's 18, he is referring to
And we had agreed that the orders that Mr. Giorgio sent explains why that could be explained is proper, and we were, we have the E-code printed, and that ordinance will have attached to it the E-code that exists.
Understood, Your Honor.
And that's the way of correcting that. The legislation that was submitted was not proper in form, but we're not going to get into that. We're going to do the same thing that the council person wants to do, we're just going to do it in a way that both lawyers agreed to.
Understood. Just for
Don't get me wrong.
Judge is referring to the rescinded replace, not the individual amendments to the
We're not telling you to pass or not pass anything, take it out of the committee. We're just saying to you, now you know where we stand on these matters, and we don't have to repeat ourselves.
Sure.
So number one, the order submitted.
No, 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 it is, Judge is referring to the rescinded replace, that is number one. The next set starts at 18, at least, what we're, with the documents that we're working on, so.
Let's start with number 18. Would council like to go with number 18, please?
Okay. Then we go to where, 18?
On which one we started with, 18, correct? Number six is normal.
The ones that I have in front of me go from 18 to
Right. So let's start with number 18.
20, yeah, 20 something, yeah, 20 something.
Everybody can turn the committee at a whole. Proposed ordinance number 18, dated 11/15. Does everybody have that in front of them?
Yep.
Okay. Stephanie, Giorgio, you've got the floor, what do you recommend?
I don't, I don't have any issues with that, that's outside of zoning, so that's fine.
That's fine, okay. So legally, that piece is good, all right, let's go to the next piece. Number, let's go to number
No, no.
Yeah, this is just discussion.
I thought it is. We're playing committee at a whole with the, we're just playing committee at a whole right now. Number 19, ordinance number 19, amending section 214-337.
So I don't have any issues with this. I know there's another piece of legislation that amends these, because this is not zoning, this is the licensing, that amends the definition for the zoning code. I guess my only concern, and I presented this to Judge, is it's very similar to the definition of a neighborhood retail, and I'm confused why you're setting forth two definitions when they're basically the same, it makes it very hard to categorize, there's not real distinguishing, but
What do you recommend to distinguish it by? What do you recommend to distinguish it?
I would recommend, I mean, if, not doing, not doing it.
Not doing it.
But that's just my recommendation, if they're basically the same definition.
They're not. And the reason why it's not is because the neighborhood convenience store, which is separate from convenience store, this one includes the sale of tobacco-related items and anything vape-related. That was, that's what was added to this that makes a difference. And when we talked about this with the codes department, they preferred that it was two separate definitions from convenience, from neighborhood retail to neighborhood convenience store. So that's...
There's two, there's two separate things, though. I don't think that you can use, because you said in the old zoning code, there was a definition.
This was the definition from the old zoning code.
Right. So I don't think, I don't know, when we were talking about it with Alana's consultant, Brian can give clarity on this. They were concerned with us amending our definition to include tobacco because that's under the jurisdiction of ETF and not a local jurisdiction that can pass a law to regulate that. So that's why that wasn't in the initial definition. Our concern at the meeting, Stephanie, and maybe this is the thing, they thought retail was too broad, and some of the stores that this law was not intended to impact would be impacted. So they wanted to distinguish between a convenience store and a retail store.
Yeah, and I, and I get that. I just don't, I just don't know that that definition does that.
But that's what the definition of convenience store was in the prior zoning code. So it did address that in the prior zoning code, which we didn't have any of those issues that we're running into now when it comes to that.
I understand that, and I don't know, because I don't have the old zoning code in front of me, but I don't know that necessarily we had a neighborhood retail in the old zoning.
Yes, that's exactly what it was. It was a neighborhood convenience store, but it was separate from neighborhood retail, which was also, was technically defined as convenience store, but it wasn't technically neighborhood retail. It was commercial or something along those lines, where they separated that neighborhood retail to this.
Brian, I think your mouth moved a little.
Well, and I think if I recall correctly, the reason for that was that when somebody would come into our office and ask about setting up a convenience store, and they were told, no, they couldn't, they'd find a way around it and say, well, it's a smoke shop, it's a...
Right.
Lamp store.
And that's why smoke shop's in there. I guess, I guess what would hurt is...
Smoke shops are separately defined and categorized within the zoning code.
I'm well aware of that. I understand that 110 percent. And I think that what this does, this does, is it brings us into defining a neighborhood convenience store, which that's what we're doing, separate from neighborhood retail, because we did separate those. Which neighborhood retail is allowed in certain districts, which neighborhood convenience store is not allowed in certain districts, and that's where it defines it separately inside the zoning code. I mean, I've gotta be honest with you. I think with, with all this said and done, I think that the attorney's recommendations are fine. I think that this council and this body and this city is still running into a problem with convenience stores, hence the moratorium. So by not changing anything, you're leaving it the same. Okay? So you're, I'm not done. Please, let me finish. I spent a lot of time on this. So if you don't do anything to change it, you're going to leave it the same. So your moratorium for two years was a waste of time. So, I mean, that's a decision that this body's gonna make. If corporation counsel or the mayor or our city attorney has a problem with this legislative body does, it is either going to be up to the mayor to veto it, okay? Or let somebody challenge it in court. I mean, because again, these are recommendations. He's saying, he's not saying he's for or against it, just on the record that this is the problem that he has. My thing is, let somebody challenge it. Because again, if you don't start separating it and making it separate, you wasted your time on a two-year moratorium doing absolutely nothing. I mean, so that's, that's what this body's gonna have to take up.
All right, Samantha, you have to say. Thank you.
I guess my only comment would be for clarity, so when we have to go and look at a definition and see where it fits in, when they're almost the exact same and they sell parts and not others...
Being redundant.
No, you're gonna say, well, neighborhood, neighborhood retail doesn't sell tobacco or anything vape-related.
Samantha, please, you interrupted Stephanie. Would you please let her finish?
Well, she's asking what the difference, and obviously, she didn't read it. Because that's the difference.
You were comparing it to, what's the place on...
Right, right. I mean, I'm...
You were comparing it to that type of...
Right. Exactly. Neighborhood retail would be considered aromas. Neighborhood convenience store is considered a convenience store.
She wanted to make a distinction between aromas and a similar-like business and a convenience store because they're going the extra step of not allowing them in certain neighborhoods, so...
Aromas doesn't sell cigarettes.
Kind of right, didn't you?
Aromas doesn't sell cigarettes.
You guys got my head spinning here.
I mean, it's unbelievable.
I mean...
You, you're, you're watching a big book.
I'm just providing my recommendations, so it's up to the council's decision what they wanna do, but that's my recommendation.
All right, thank you very much.
Alana said at the time, just so I...
Let's go to the next one then.
What Alana said at the time is that by using the tobacco or lottery system as a distincter in our city code, it's governing laws that we may not have jurisdiction on.
Right. I didn't add lottery in there.
Right, but either or.
Smoke shop.
Right.
Well, I mean, we did before, so I guess what's the difference now?
Right.
Okay.
Councilman...
I just got one question from Marcus, so what you just said. So between what she's saying, there's a difference between aromas selling food and pizza than the convenience store on the corner. So why wouldn't we put this in?
So to, to, so my opinion, when it comes, like, and I can go either way. I understand what she's saying with the necessity of the thing. Last meeting, I said, yeah, that'd be great if it was specific without knowing what the specific definition is. So like, I guess that's cool, but again, I don't know if we have the authority to regulate that stuff. But secondly, I don't think it really matters, to be honest with you, because I think like, there's still the step of the zoning board of appeals. So a place like aromas, I think, is likely to get permitted, whereas a convenience store is not, because everybody kinda understands what it is for tobacco.
But how do you say that you can't do one without the other unless you're defining it? So now you're discriminating against aromas in a convenience store unless a convenience store is literally regulated as a convenience store.
Well, but that's like a marginal test case, so how many places like aromas can you have? So that's what the zoning, that's why there's a board, because the board makes decisions.
So then what was the point of putting a moratorium?
Because convenience stores, no, it's one of those things like, no.
Exactly.
Hang on. It's one of those things like the Supreme Court does. When we know it, right, hopefully, humans have the judgment to understand what their laws are intended to do. So if you do pornography, what's pornography? When I see it, I'll tell you. What's a convenience store? When I see it, I'll tell you. If you don't agree with my judgment, then you go to the zoning board of appeals, who then will make a decision.
So we'll, we'll put this for judgment day then, and let somebody challenge it.
Let's go to the next piece of legislation, number 20.
Why even do a moratorium if you weren't gonna amend it?
Samantha, we are amending it. If we, we'd like to continue. Orders, ordinance amending section 229, seven definitions.
Is this 21?
Yes, it's number 20, I'm sorry.
20.
21.
20.
20, 20 is the, is the same thing, it's just the zoning code is the same, adding that definition, so my comments are, are the same.
Okay. So I'm not, you're disagreeing with 20, 19 and 20 disagreeing with?
Only need five votes.
Our next, our next piece of legislation is number 21, amending definitions. Stephanie, would you please help us out with that, too?
I don't have any issues with that. It's not, the, the actual ordinance is not in the best form, but I don't have any issues with that. My only question is, and I know there's another thing that, I know you're striking the word convenience from that. I just wanna make sure that it's, it's clear that those gasoline stations will have the convenience store. They will be, most of them want the convenience store attached to it. So even though you're not calling it a, you know, gasoline convenience station, typically, most gas stations have a convenience component. So, but I just wanted to make that clear. So otherwise, I don't have any issues with, with that.
Might I break in on that? I understand that. I mean, I think you're right, almost every gas station wants to have the convenience store. But this is just to say that if you're a gas station, we're gonna regulate you just as a gas station. We don't care about that.
No, no, I understand that. I just wanna make sure that that was clear.
Right.
But yeah, I understand that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussions on 21? Our next one is number 22. Stephanie?
So I spoke with Judge about this. I think he and I both have some concerns about what you're, you know, trying to do. And I have a recommendation regarding the neighborhood convenience store as a separate use and then the neighborhood retail. And I know you're trying to make those exactly the same.
Yep.
My recommendation is, is if you're gonna add a new use, you should give a place within the city, a district, that you can have that use. When you put a use, in the use table and just leave it blank, you almost draw attention to it that you're not permitting it. Anything that's not permitted in the use table is, is not permitted. So my recommendation would just be to, to add the definition or whatever definition you wanna do, and then just remove it from the use table and not have it included in the use table. If you are really looking to put some more oversight on the neighborhood retail, other than the use variance, which these entities will be able to go and apply for a use variance, and they're gonna, there isn't gonna be any oversight from the zoning board as far as real specifics, is my recommendation would be to select the districts that you'd like or would want these neighborhood retails in, if any, and make them a special use permit, making them go before planning board and making them go and get the approvals that they need to do and do all of that. That would be my recommendation, because right now, they're just permitted by right across the board. There's, that, there is no oversight other than the licensing, but...
Correct. I think initially, and I just think that it got like, I think at the last meeting, it was like industrial and commercial. There was two districts that it had to show up in.
So I guess, so to speak, so what happens if something's not in a permitted use, right? So say, for example, you had neighborhood retail, right? And it had central business district, neighborhood mixed use. And say it didn't have something in the R.M. district, for example, right? If they wanted to apply for it, it's not zoned for that, so they would go in front of the zoning code and apply for the zoning change. So nobody's saying that they don't have a special use permit. They now are just not zoned to be in those districts and have to apply to go in front of the zoning board to apply for the application for permitted use.
But if she, if she wants to zone it somewhere...
All right, I'll zone it and...
You'd have to have it one permitted zoning.
Why? What is one difference?
I'm, I'm not suggesting that it has to be necessarily in, in one zone. My recommendation is if you, if you wanna outright prohibit them within the city, is just to take it out of the, is just to take it out of the use table and not put it in the use table at all. Don't leave the use table blank, just completely take it out of the use table.
Or they're permitted in one district.
Or permitted in...
One or more.
One or more districts. And like I said, I would not just permit it, I would require it to be a special use permit, which requires planning board approval, and they can impose conditions and whatever else is necessary, public hearing before that process goes through.
That, may I? I, that just makes a lot of intuitive sense to me, that to, to define something and list it and then put it in the use table and say, but guess what? You can't put it in any, you can't put it anywhere, is, is odd.
The reason, the reason I say that is if you look throughout the entire use table, there is use is permitted in, in all of them. There's, in somewhere within the city, although some sections are blank within whatever use. But when you put it in there blank, you just draw attention to it. That, that's just my recommendation. If it's not in the use table, it's presumed it's not permitted.
Would anybody really have an objection to one of these in an, in...
I guess, I guess, so then what was the point of having the, the use table of supplemental regulations in the use table? If they wouldn't have to follow that part of that zoning code?
Well, the supplemental regulations were included because it was permitted, and they had to follow those supplemental regulations, so...
And that's different from everything that comes to the left of supplemental regulations is a part of the city. This reads as, by the way, it's not allowed anywhere. And that is a funny way to write the code.
I guess, I guess you could say that, so to speak, but me, I would think that if you're not allowing neighborhood convenience stores, then it's, you're right, it's not a permitted use, but just saying that, listen, okay, I don't know. I was just leaving it in there because we were putting the definitions, but here's the thing. Leaving it without, I guess, in there doesn't not mean that they're not prohibited. They just have to go through an extra step of the zoning code, which would be, they have to go in front of the zoning board.
Yeah, yeah, I see that too.
So I mean, that, you're not taking, you're not saying that they're not allowed in the city. It's not like you wrote in the definition that said neighborhood convenience stores are prohibited in the city. What they're saying is that they're not allowed in these, in these use tables. They have to follow the supplemental regulations, and they still have to go in front of the zoning board. I mean, really, if you're gonna tell me if I gotta put an X into industrial, I will say, guess what? Have the permitted use or, or whatever, whatever you're gonna say, because guess what? What starts, what starts happening when, when convenience stores start popping up in industrial neighborhoods? You went for a more, no, it's not fine. And that's what you're saying, that you're trying to get away from allowing this, the, the difference between neighborhood retail and neighborhood convenience stores. So I guess if you're going to allow it in a, one permitted use, so to speak, I mean, then what happens when they're allowed? Then they start going in there and they move, they moved it around and say, hey, listen, I'm gonna go buy, buy a parcel in an industrial, you know, part of the neighborhood and so to speak. So I mean, what are you trying to regulate? You're trying to regulate that they're no longer permitted uses inside those neighborhoods. You're allowing them to go in front of the zoning board now, which leaving that use table blank, fine, yeah, it brings attention to it. I mean, a moratorium for three years isn't bringing attention to not allowing convenience stores in time to neighborhood, or two years or whatever. You know what I mean? But still, I'm just, I'm just trying to say, like...
Councilwoman Samantha?
You're trying to bring attention to that. I mean, you already brought attention to it.
All right. Judge, please, you have the floor, then Stephanie?
But Mr. Giorgio and I spoke of this, number...
We're on number 22, Your Honor.
22?
Yes, sir.
We're on 22. The mere fact that you've spent 10 minutes debating what it says, when I see that X at the, at the end there, to me, there are no gas stations. That's what it means to me, and I think that's what it means to a layman. If you're gonna have a use, put it someplace. You didn't put it anyplace, in my opinion, and that's why I objected to it. And I told, I asked Mr. Giorgio, where do you think it goes? I said, I don't know, that's their job, not ours.
I think the recommendations from our codes officer would be good.
Quite frankly, and every one of these instances, including with the codes commissioner, it ends up in this big debate, which means to me that when the two lawyers say, we don't know where it goes and we don't want to tell you where it goes, I don't think you even know where it goes. And I think all that does is eliminate gas stations. And I only know of one gas station in Utica, and it's on the corner of Mohawk and...
And Rutgers Street.
And Rutgers Street. That's the gas station, because there's nothing else there. So if I'm confused, I can't recommend something I'm not, I'm not solid on. That's my notes sake.
Right. You can't comprehend the legislation, it's a sense.
Because you're talking about gas stations and not neighborhood convenience stores.
Samantha, you're interrupting again, please.
The only, the only other thing I will add is with the special use permit, there is more oversight to the, the plans of whatever is being, for so, better, lack of a better words, developed versus the special, or excuse me, the, the use variance. The zoning board does not regulate it to the extent that if you really want that oversight with looking things over and reviewing a site plan and doing X, Y, and Z, you're not gonna get that from the zoning board if they go for a variance. That's why I'm recommending, if there's any districts you do wanna allow it, would be to allow it via special use permit, which would be different than as it is right now, which is just permitted by right. There is no oversight as it stands right now.
Because there's no actually, right.
And again, if you wanna outright prohibit it, I just would not leave the use table blank. I would just not list it in the use table.
Marcus, your recommendation?
This came about because...
The zoning code was passed.
The council wanted to limit the use of convenience stores.
That's our goal, yes.
They had a bunch of roundabout ways to limit the proposition of convenience stores, whether it's a distance marker, whether it's a lighting law, or whether it's a signage law. So I said in front of this council, and I still stand by this, if you want to eliminate convenience stores, eliminate convenience stores from the use table. Now, do I think, as codes commissioner, in my experience, that there'd be a bunch of convenience stores popping up in industrial and it'd be a problem in the city? I don't think so. But Samantha says she's trying to make a broader point, that these aren't allowed unless you go in front of the zoning board. So that's up to you guys to make that.
I mean, this is what I'm saying. I mean, we're the lawmakers, which I find, I understand. This zoning code was passed, right, in 2020? I wasn't even on the council. And now I've spent how much of my life correcting what was passed? I mean, this is, this is getting to the point where it's exhausted. Let somebody challenge it. Let the lawyers inside the city go defend it, okay? Stop telling me I can't do something, okay? I'm the lawmaker. And that's it. They're the attorneys, they've gotta defend it. If somebody's gonna bring the city to court because they weren't allowed a permitted use, then guess what? Maybe they, then maybe they shouldn't be allowed.
Councilwoman, can you please call and ask it to be answered? Stephanie, you got the next one.
Okay. Again, like I said, I'm not saying if you wanna outright permit it, that's fine. My recommendation, though, is just to eliminate it from the use table and not just have a blank use table. With respect to, so that's my recommendation with that, and then just 23, ordinance number 23, goes along with that. My recommendation is at least as to form, you do not need the, the line that says neighborhood retail leaving the district row blank by removing P from the row. Entirely scratch that. You have the use table, it shows what you're doing.
Okay.
So...
What would you, what would you recommend?
She's the one that just recommended.
Excuse me.
I recommended one or the other. You have both there, it's redundant.
Yes.
But what is the point of having redundancy?
I heard that a lot of times.
What's the...
Counselwoman, you keep on interrupting, would you please let her finish?
I want somebody to explain to me, what is the, what is wrong with having redundancy?
Would you let...
So that E code understands exactly what we're asking for.
Would you let her finish?
That is not even in proper form, number one.
How, how? I mean, you, you could, you've had two weeks now.
Again, would she...
Rewrite the legislation.
All right.
This is the fifth time we've amended this one specific piece.
Counselwoman, Classmate Tessa, she would like to tell us how to do it properly. Would you like to please...
She told us last time.
Again, you're interrupting, would you please let her finish? Thank you.
I, I just said how to do it, have one or have the other, and my suggestion is just to remove the line that says neighborhood retail leaving the district row blank by removing P from the row. Completely scratch that and add to the, where it says be ordained that section 2-29-125, the use table C commercial of the zoning code be amended, just say as follows, and then you show you're striking the P from those in its highlight. That's clear.
All right, as follows.
And we had the use table one last time.
Classmate Tessa, she's trying to help you with this and you're constantly debating this with her. Please, would you let her finish?
This is the third time we've amended this one specific piece, so I hope that this is the final time we have to amend this now. Hope it is.
I'll just note, I was doing things on the fly on the floor at the special meeting, and I was trying to make it clear, but we were going through things very quickly, and if you had allowed me the time and opportunity to do it and write them and prepare, I would have done that as I offered to do at the last meeting. I just wanted to make that clear.
Sure, I appreciate it. Long, long fifteen minutes.
You know, Stephanie, you're doing this out of the goodness of your heart. If the council would like to stop this and continue it later on, you can probably do it later, Steph. Because you know something? This is not, somebody's not being cooperative, and I know you did a lot of work on this, Steph. So if you don't mind, when you get time, you can go over this and give us a written amendments for it, and the council could look at those amendments. And I appreciate all the time that you put into it. Judge, I also appreciate all the time you put into it. I'm sorry we got you early, because we did have time today, we will take a 10-minute break. But Councilman DeBrengo, we will see those amendments in front of us before the council meeting, and we'll go over them and we'll make a choice then. As I saw.
Basically, what we're going to do is let them write the amendments.
Absolutely.
And then we'll accept them as a whole.
Okay, absolutely. Is everybody okay with that?
All right. It'll be subject for discussion, so that'll be on a special meeting.
No, no.
Second, we'll be on the caucus.
Uh, make a motion to close the caucus.
Time out, time out.
Oh, wait, Frankie's got more.
The 21st is the public hearing, we have to do it prior to that.
Yes.
We'll be in council...
So we can't do it the next council meeting?
Committee of the whole.
Committee of the whole.
Committee of the whole meeting.
As soon as they have them amended, they'll send us the amended copy through email, we'll review it and be prepared on the 21st.
And then I can schedule one if we have to, prior to the 21st.
Yes. If, if council would be so kind to do that for us, please.
So can I just say one thing before we amend this? So, listen, all of this happened because we voted on this new zoning code, okay? Councilperson Colosimo, she's done as much work as anybody. I gotta be honest with you, I'm going over and over, my head is spinning, but I know every time we come to something, we have a problem with the zoning code. So we need to get this together, we need to pass it, and we need to move on.
That's what we're doing.
That's what we need to do. Because it's, it's, it's out of control. I mean, my, I'm not a Wall Street lawyer by any means, but my head is spinning, and I'm sure everybody else in this place is thinking the same thing. So let's get it done, and let's stop nickel and diming and going at every little paragraph, and let's get it done and move on.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr., yes, Judge, your honor.
We have a zoning code that you passed in February of that year, and since that time, the zoning code and all of these stores and everything have existed and have gone on. Nobody's sued us that I know of. And we're having a big argument about that there's a great necessity to change it. Well, if you're going to change it, it has to be something that's relevant. And now, when you write ordinances, there are ways to write them that require crossing out things, putting things in brackets and all that. We, Stephanie and I have sort of ignored that because we, we didn't want to get too technical, but actually what the statute says, when you amend an ordinance, you have to put in what was there and what you're amending, so you know what you're amending.
Is every piece of legislation around it?
When I look at the 23 for instances, I say it's objectable because of the verbiage. I said it affects a lot of businesses. Just remove it from the use table and blank, rather than blank, and should allow it somewhere, would be subject to some reviews. I mean, if we're having trouble with this, and we're, that's our business to be, have trouble with it and revise it, then I agree with the councilwoman that it's your job to legislate, not us. But it's our job to give you legislation that is proper and form. If you look through all of this, if we wanted to really be technical, we could almost not approve half of it, if not all of it, because it isn't proper and form. First one, definitely. But we have tried to be not so technical so that you could reach a meeting of the minds. That's all we're doing. If you reach a meeting of the minds, and I don't think, you know, we're acting like this is something that's got to be passed tonight, it's got to be passed by the 25th. Why? That thing's been in existence for a couple of years. I don't know if anything has resulted in a big problem for the Law Department or anybody else. But you are legislators, and the councilwoman wants to change things and makes the better definitions, I'm all for it. Just do it right, that's all.
Legally.
And don't access best lawyers, just go along because you think that's what we should do. That is not what we do.
I understand, your honor.
It's not what we do, we're not, we're not going to do.
Joe, can you just...
If I write down notes saying that bothers me, it bothers me.
Right.
And your honor, I appreciate...
I've got notes on everything.
I appreciate everything you do.
And I have the same objection for 24. I form a little hazy on 25, but we said okay. Form a little hazy on 27, but we said okay.
This code was never improper form.
There's a suggested amendment on 27.
And we've had nothing but problems on every issue since we passed.
We're fixing it.
Well, it's 26.
I'm fixing it.
That, that's a very, very serious one, because 26, and I'll tell you right now, 26, I think that's the one about the common council approving all the contracts that are 26. Well, that, you know, is going to conflict with state law because, you know, there is a state statute regarding planning boards, and, and it's usually an executive function.
Me 27, your honor.
We, 28, we came to agreement on an amendment, 29, we had a conflict about the...
Your honor, when you have time, could you just give us a summary of each legislation and tell us your opinion?
So we did our homework, but this isn't something that, you know, that, that is going to happen when, when all of you agree, or at least five or six of you agree that that's the way you want to do it, fine, that's your job, not ours.
I understand.
We're just pointing out where you have to do a little more work, that's all.
Okay.
You asked us to do that, we did it. We spent three hours on this during this week. I don't, can't tell you about the hours before this, when I've talked about it, I've talked to Councilwoman, Colismal told her, I'm really looking at this closely. That's something like 16, 17 amendments, you know? Well, you know, this is what you're going to get from lawyers. I'm sorry, but that's the way we're built.
All right, you're right, thank you. Joey, want to just sum it up quick? So we, so we get a five-minute break?
No, I'm off, sir.
All right, thank you. We're in recess, turn seven o'clock meeting for five minutes. Everybody good? All right, thank you.
December 7th, 2022, we're going to call this meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Aiello, Burmaster, Friend, Miola, Irvin, Beatrice, Williamson, Classimo Testa, Debrango, Galini, all present.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the council.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, conservative, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in the highest.
Now, there's one piece we're going to move around today, and it's a proclamation, but we do have to get through a few quick things first. First order of business, the minutes of the previous meeting.
Could I make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes, please, Mr. President?
We have a second from Burmaster. Does the council also accept those minutes?
Yes.
Anyone opposed? All right, the reading of the minutes been dispensed. It appears we have nothing for a public hearing. Do we have anything for sure? We've missed it a couple times. All right, so the public hearing does start now, but we have no pieces to hear anyone on, so the public hearing is now closed. Next order of business is a proclamation that we'd like to move to the top here for Todd Eber here. I just moved, sorry. Before we have Todd up here, yeah, can someone move the piece? Okay, we have a motion to move. Debrango's the second. No, we'll vote after. We got to read it.
Is it good?
You have the floor.
Can you hear me?
No, is the microphone on? Yeah, you're good. All right.
Zip it, Joe. All right, so I have a proclamation recognizing Todd Abraham. I'm a huge Utica fanatic. I was a Proctor grad of '06. I love anything positive that comes out of Proctor. I watched your baseball games, your football games, and to say I was impressed was an understatement. So I have a proclamation recognizing Todd Abraham, whereas Todd has been an outstanding athlete, teammate, and student during his tenure at Proctor High School, and whereas Todd's baseball career is going to continue to shine as he signed Division One at Binghamton University, and whereas Todd's baseball accomplishments so far are as follows: He is a 2022 Perfect Game Underclassman, All-American. He received the 2021 Mickey Manna World Series Batting Award, along with the 2022 CABA World Series Top Hitter Award. He received the 2021 All Mohawk Valley First Team, 2021 All Mohawk Valley Rookie of the Year, 2021 All Mohawk Valley First Team. Now, those are just baseball accomplishments. Whereas Todd's accomplishments do not stop with baseball. He's accomplished just as much in football and basketball. In football, he was a 2022 Great American Rivalry Series Most Valuable Player, 2022 Big 44 Memorial All-Star Game Most Valuable Player, Section III First Team All-Star, and a 2022 First Team Syracuse.com All-Star San White Football Team, which Mr. Strife gave me that addition that day. And he was also in basketball, a two-year varsity letterman. And whereas Todd has been able to achieve all this while focusing on the most important part, his academic success, while being 19th overall in the senior class of 867, top 3 percent, he also received the Thomas R. Proctor Air Force Scholar-Athlete Award and 2022 Great American Rivalry Series Scholar-Athlete Award. Resolve now that the city of Utica does hereby recognize Todd Abraham for his sportsmanship and academic success, and be it further resolved that the city of Utica Common Council does hereby recognize Todd Abraham on his letter of intent to Division One Binghamton Baseball and extend our congratulations and best wishes for many more years of success.
Congratulations.
First off, I want to thank everybody for allowing me to be here tonight. It means a lot to me. And most importantly, I got to thank my parents, you know, this big team effort. You know, everything they've done for me, I couldn't ask for any better parents. And I got to thank Proctor High School, the teachers, you know, they really set you up for greatness and they really care about you. And I got to thank my coaches at Proctor, you know, they have the most knowledge around about the sport. And I really think, you know, they coach for more about winning or losing. They, you know, most high school kids, their career ends when high school ends, so they really try and prepare you for life. You know, I've always been a Utica kid growing up, played for the Utica Bulldogs growing up, played in the Dick Miller Leagues, played for the South Utica Little League, all coming up through, went to Donovan Middle School, and you know, now I'm a senior at Proctor. And I worked for the summer, I worked for the Green Team picking up parks, the local parks. And this summer, I've decided to play for the Utica Blue Sox, so staying local. I had a couple other teams I could have played for, but you know, watching my cousins and stuff playing for the Utica team, I went to all those games when I was little, so you know, for my last summer before going off to college, I'm really, really grateful to be able to stay in Utica and play in the high-level collegiate league around here. And you know, with all the opportunities in Utica, I really think every kid, if they take advantage of it, they could be something for, you know, all, you know, the things you guys give us and all the opportunities we have here. And lastly, I just want to say I'm proud to be from Utica, New York, and I'm going to keep representing Utica for as long as I can. Thank you.
I'll see you soon. Thanks, Dave.
Throw your votes up on the board. I know what they'll be, of course. Number five, six, waiting for you over here. All right, Benis.
Nine is adopted.
Thank you. Public comment. We don't need a sheet.
Let me grab it.
Did you grab it?
Okay.
All right, next order of business this evening is public comment period. Bill Maxim, please come forward. The comment council's provided you a copy of Section 3244, public comment period rule. Please state your name. You may begin.
Bill Maxim. I'm from Carpenter's Local 277. I want to thank everybody for allowing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of the proposed amendment to the apprentice resolution. With, I'll start with, I've lived in and around this community my entire life, and it always was a repressed area, on a decline. We've seen great growth in this city recently, and there's more to come. Right now, there's other entities around the city that have youth build programs, carpentry masonry program, and the very, our very own Proctor High School is proposing, putting together a CTE program. So I think it would benefit, I think it would benefit people in this community as the primary, and primary employers around here are like Tractor Supply, Orgel, and you know, they're not, they're not necessarily high-paying jobs that have affordable benefits. With real estate and things like that at higher than usual, $20 an hour wouldn't allow you to be able to even purchase a house in the city of Utica here, let alone fix it up. When we offer these opportunities to people, you know, coming out of poverty, it gives them a hand up to, you know, a middle-class lifestyle, and it also gives them skills to, you know, maybe renovate their houses in the city and, you know, and really help, help clean up some, some different neighborhoods. So I want to thank everybody for allowing me to speak on behalf of the apprentice resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, Anthony Tubalino. Comment council's provided you a copy of Section 3244, public comment period rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
State your name.
My name's Anthony Tubalino, and I'm a new business agent for Local 158 Operating Engineers. I cover Utica. I've worked here, I've been in the union 24 years, and I've worked on projects that were unioned, and I've worked a lot of years over here in Utica surrounding jobs. And I've worked with apprentices who live around here, and I represent them. And I, I want to say thanks for giving me the time to speak to you first. Thank you for the jobs that you do, because I was in local government before, and I know it's hard, and there's a lot of pressing issues. But I think this is a really, really important one, because with this language change, you might be able to change some young person's life forever, because we, as the unions and apprenticeship programs, we offer them skills and a path to retirement where they have something when they're done. With this, it might help them get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Yilai Vargas. The comment council's provided you a copy of Section 3244, public comment period rule. Are you in agreement with this? State your name for the record and you may begin. Thank you.
Deli Vargas, Carpenter's Local 277. Well, I had an elaborate speech written, but unfortunately, can't remember half of it. So I'm an apprentice graduate from, from my local. I'm also an immigrant from Dominican Republic. I reside in the city of Syracuse. Your apprenticeship program isn't just an opportunity to learn a trade, it's an opportunity to change your life. I mean, actually, I'll just talk about experience. My, my wife's oldest just had surgery for scoliosis, a spinal fusion. The bill I got, well, the estimate was for $195,000. My insurance company paid $68,000. Out of pocket, I paid 500. That would have crushed me. That would have probably had a significant impact on my child's life, drastically limiting their opportunities. Thankfully, thanks to my union and my benefits, I've, I now have, I have the opportunity to provide them with a better life. Not just for, not just for her, my other four kids. My wife's a stay-home mother, with, you know, it's, it can be, it could be chaotic with five kids and, you know, a full-time career, but I mean, I wouldn't have it any other way. Without, without my union, without my, without my union support, without the benefits, I'd be, you know, I'd be back home probably in a third world country. You know, I'm here in America, living the dream, American dream, middle-class dream. Simple, because I got the skills through my trade. I'm a college graduate. The only diploma that's actually working for me right now is my apprenticeship diploma. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Hamza Sinan.
How you guys doing?
Comment council's provided you a copy of Section 3244, public comment period rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
Please state your name and you may begin.
Hamza Sinan, I, what was it? I came to talk about the convenience store moratorium. But also, I've noticed that the unions have showed up, and what you may call, I'm in support of unions, and I support you guys, and I'm happy you're here. And I wasn't aware we even had unions left in this town. So it's very, you know, it's heartwarming seeing you guys here, you know? Good luck. I hope you develop roots and you grow here and get things going, you know? Good luck to you. I was never for the convenience store moratorium. My recollection was back in 2003. It showed up somewhere around there. People started talking about it. It crept in slowly, and it passed overnight. It wasn't, back in the, since, back in 2000, 2001, 2003 over there, it was pretty quiet around here. Like the union guy said, it was a repressed, it was a repressed place, depressing place. There wasn't much people even in the audience. They passed it overnight. Nobody even knew what it was or what it was about. There was a lot of, people were upset about unemployed African Americans in front of stores, so they just passed. They had a moratorium on convenience stores. And I really want you to look back at that and look back at the root of this convenience store issue and really, you know, start looking back at it, and you know, it's really, it comes from, it comes out of hatred and racism toward Arab Muslims, and it's been going on for a long time. And I know it's not your fault. If Mr. Guaramone was around, he could have explained it to the government back then, but there was nobody around to explain it to them or what they were talking about, and they weren't even talking to each other. None of you people, none of them, none of you guys were even here. It was a very, very depressing time. So the difference in the zoning ordinance is a convenience store is an Arab, is owned by Arab Muslims, and a pizza place is owned by Italian Catholics. That's what's really going on. You know, mom and pop places have never hurt Utica. They've done, you know, the Muslim population is causing no problems. I really wish you would stop talking about the moratorium on convenience stores in general. It feels racist, feels old. It's, it's really, it's, it makes no sense. It causes anger and hatred amongst you guys as well, because it's, it comes out of anger and hatred. That's why you guys can't figure it out. He's mentioning pornography, she's having a hard time over here. People, you're gonna, you're gonna get nothing out of it, man, because it comes from hate. And I really, you know, I really feel bad for this community, because you hurt their community, you stopped them from growing, you stopped them from making money. You know, stop talking about it. Mom and pops shops have not hurt Utica at all. A convenience store is, it's legal, they, they're doing business. There should be no issues here. So I, you know, I really wish you guys would stop fighting over it, really. You know, because there's no, there's no answer to the problem. The problem was getting involved in it in the first place. You know, the problem was bringing it up. That was, that's the problem, you know? That's how I feel about it, but maybe I'm off, I don't know. My recollection might be off, but I'm pretty sure that's, that's pretty much what's going on. But I'm sure if Mr. Guaramone was around at that time, he could have explained to government what you guys are, why you guys are fighting or what was, but it's just moratorium on stores, and we can't have, certain districts don't want these convenience stores, they cause problems, I don't know. I don't, really, I can't figure it out either. You know, I really wish you wouldn't be involved in it anymore. You know, business is business. Let business go. You know, it's about it, you know? Thank you.
Thank you.
Have it going.
The next and last speaker this evening is Travis Phillips. Come up, please. The comment council's provided you a copy of Section 3244, public comment period rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes, sir, I am.
State your name, you may begin.
My name's Travis Phillips. I'm a representative for Laborers Local 190. I just want to thank everybody for your time today. I'm very glad that you guys are, you know, speaking about revision to the apprenticeship language. I think it'd be a huge benefit for this city in many, many ways. You know, I'll keep this short for you, but you know, it's a proven fact that, you know, union and non-union contractors that have apprenticeship programs, you know, have a higher standard of safety training, you know, period. You know, jobs get done, you know, without work injuries, you know, and jobs get done on time, you know, on budget. So, you know, I'll keep it at that. Thank you guys very much, and I hope to see this revision go through. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes public comment period. Thank you. Next order of business this evening, comment council guests. I'd like to invite representatives from Baca to come forward. Hi, from Republica, will be Haka Gravovika will be giving a presentation. Anthony, will you go over here? Turn it back on?
I'll just say a few words and then, yes. Okay. So, good evening. Uh, first of all, thank you all for giving us this opportunity to be here with you tonight. Uh, my name is Hanka Gravovika.
Hang on, we gotta get your presentation going.
Yes.
Yes. All right, hang on.
Okay.
Okay, you wanna point down the screen?
We, we will, he'll go down there, he'll, he'll be the one. Yep.
There, what did you get it going?
Is it anybody by me?
I think it is. It's, it's, it's a sleeve. There it goes. So you probably have to just, uh, what did you do? Extended mode? Which one?
That's true, that's true.
The cool case.
They let me say everything.
What's that?
And drive, by the way.
Good school.
I gotta keep that a campbell. They don't sound like this.
Good school. Is it on? Fourth and fifth grade?
Yeah.
Was ready for, uh, uh, sorry. Actually, I didn't.
I know, it's, it's many junior years.
Oh, she's in there. I think it's a student.
I know. She's like, it's many junior years.
I think it's a student.
Yep.
Okay.
I know, she's like, it's many junior years.
I think it's a student.
Yep.
Okay.
I know, she's like, it's many junior years.
I think it's a student.
I know, she's like, it's many junior years.
I think it's a student.
I know, she's like, it's many junior years.
I think it's a student.
I know, she's like, it's many junior years.
I think it's a student.
I know, she's like, it's many junior years.
I think it's a student.
I know, she's like, it's many junior years.
I think it's a student.
I know, she's like, it's many junior years.
I think it's a student.
I know, she's like, it's many junior years.
I think it's a student.
I know, she's like, it's many junior years.
I think it's a student.
I know, she's like, it's many junior years.
I think it's a student.
I know, she's like, it's many junior years.
I think it's a student.
I know, she's like, it's many junior years.
I think it's a student.
I know, she's like, it's many junior years.
I think it's a student.
I know, she's like, it's many junior years.
Is that blocking the head?
No, I'll just say a few words and then he'll take over.
I think it's a student.
Maybe they can print it out.
Get a shot.
Maybe Sandra can read it out.
Get a shot.
I think I was, I didn't work today, didn't.
Damn. That was, that was bad. That was like the.
Yeah, and then, I think they can see, I think it was something that I didn't even understand. Uh, but I think they're.
You can't do that because you're still. Let's see, let's see. I can see him around here. We just have, yeah.
This will be already done.
Right, right then?
I didn't have them pass around.
I know it's gonna happen, it's gonna go back after.
Screen is not yet on, I think, and there's a, that's not too.
Number one or two? Number one. And there was a proposal for Utica City to have the number one. You see her right? Okay. I'm shaking plenty of some. Just go search through. It's like, I know it's plugged into this.
I don't know. It's the tech, it's the technology. You always learn something. With new technology, you always have, need a hard copy too.
They put a bag in there. You see her actually facial.
We know them.
Yeah.
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 Okay, so.
Like to.
Yeah.
Well, you guys are looking at it, providing slides. I apologize. Or we can, I mean, I can hit some best, Roman, I can print the PowerPoint number.
Yes, we can.
All right.
Okay, so you, do you want to stay here? You wanna, you wanna stay here and kinda show it?
First of all, I can do it. Yeah. Well, no, so we're gonna print the PowerPoint for everyone. We'll just move through some legislative, they'll distribute the PowerPoint to everybody so everyone will have it.
Okay.
And then, uh, you'll be able to, so actually, we'll just, I'm gonna go on ten minutes of bring you guys back up.
Okay.
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 Yes. All right. I apologize, but, uh, it appears our TV stopped functioning. We're gonna move on to, uh, communications from the mayor. Everyone here? All right. December seventh, twenty twenty-two, this is the mayor's message to the common council. Uh, before I begin, in a few moments, we will bring Baca back up after the clerk, deputy clerk, sorry, prints the, uh, presentation for the council. The mayor's message to the council. Contained are several updates to the common council. Period for leaf collection has now ended and the city is no longer picking up leaves at the curb. Final collections have already taken place and any leaves left at the curb will be considered a violation of city code and the owner will be notified and billed if the city has to clean up piles. The Department of Public Works will now transition to a winter schedule to ensure roads are properly treated and cleaned for snowfall. Thank you to the town of New Hartford for assisting the city of Utica cleanup. This was a particularly challenging season and working with our neighboring municipality ensured that we would meet the necessary deadlines. The administration announced today that the trees along Verick Street corridor would be removed and replaced. The plan for Verick Street is to build green infrastructure and a streetscape that matches both historical and current significance of the district. We will place hanging lights over the roadway, plant new trees, install permeable pavers and install distinctive light posts. Current tree line consists of numerous dying and inappropriately placed trees. Verick Street is a destination district and the investment in the infrastructure and streetscaping should maximize the aesthetic of such a significant part of our city. The private sector is invested there, so now we will. This will require the public to bear with us as most of the transformation will occur in the spring and the missing tree line will be noticeable until then. Also, members of the council have asked several questions about the clubhouse and restaurant at Valley View. For the first time in decades, my administration, the administration, this is the mayor's words, uh, the administration decided to significantly invest in the clubhouse, which sits in the heart of the historic Roscoe Conocle Park. We hired a design professional to rethink the structure and make design upgrades that would make this a world-class facility inside a world-class park. The end result was a beautiful design, but the rising construction costs pushed the mayor's, uh, the project estimates closer to five million than the budget of two million. We have to have a facility that is state-of-the-art, but also that comes at a cost unrealistic to our taxpayers. Therefore, the administration will work with the design professionals to rethink how we can achieve those two goals. As a result, we do not know yet the final facility will look like, entail, or cost operate. At the conclusion of the new design process, the administration will rebid the property upgrades and the operations at the clubhouse facility. Again, for those of you tuning in, this is the mayor's message to the council. Finally, work is progressing at Hannah Park. The new stone columns are in. Work continues on the oldest and apartments. The dog parks in North Utica and Tiara Park, uh, Proctor Park are taking shape. Parking lot Bag Square is complete. The zoo is building a visitor center and the children's museum is taking shape in the parkway. Campbell Park Stage should pop up in the coming weeks. Speed radars and cameras are installed throughout the city. The walls at Franklin Square Alley are being repaired and Liberty Bell Park is getting a makeover, complete with a working fountain. Thea Bowman is hosting childcare in the weekends. A new parking lot is being built behind the Stanley Theater. A pavilion is taking shape at FT Proctor Park. United Cerebral Palsy's building is being erected along the arterial. The police and fire stations are being approved. More than five dozen homes have received substantial physical upgrades. There's a new inclusive playground at Tiara Proctor Park. The Utica Proud App has more than a thousand downloads. Wackel Field is now a fully accessible park. These are just some of the things happening now in Utica. It's an exciting time to be a Utican. We're requesting substantial budget amendments today to make sure all of this work is finished and the most feasible projects are prioritized. This is more than our city has ever taken on and we continue to adjust to meet all of our deadlines and promises to our residents. Happy holiday season to all. Again, that was the mayor's message to the council. Thank you. Reports from the city officers. Deputy Chief Newton.
Uh, I just wanted to thank councilperson Cosmo Testa for, uh, asking me to, uh, read today at Watson Williams School. I was really impressed with the students. I couldn't believe how polite and respectful they were and, uh, it's just a really great experience, so I'm appreciative for that.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas.
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Phillips.
I, I, I just would like to add that I, I live across from Watson Williams School and the students weren't as impressed with, um, Deputy Chief Newton as he was with them. It were weird though, but, that's all. That's all.
Next time I will send you.
Thank you.
My main concern today is making sure I can read the book.
All right, so, that's the end of the reports this evening. Um, do we have any cash reports?
The city of Utica cash report for October twenty twenty-two is ninety point seven million received and filed.
Okay. At this time, I would like to bring Baca back up here, please. Haka Gravovika. You could all reach the podium. Now, I do have a question. Would you mind if this presentation is posted to the public? You wouldn't mind? That's fine? Okay, so, um...
We're just gonna send out the original one, that seems like one, the first one. Couple pages.
Yes. Point being is, uh, since this won't be displayed on the monitor, um, I'd like to at least post it to ECO three sixty.
Absolutely.
In the meeting notes, that way if people are watching, which they are, um, they can see the presentation. The council has it and you may begin.
Okay. I guess we, every day you learn something, so as, as you can see, we should be making copies while we having the technology issues. But anyways, again, uh, good evening. Uh, first of all, I would like to thank you all for giving us this opportunity to be here with you tonight. Um, my name is Hanka Gravovika. I am the president of the Basie American Community Association. I am here with my theme to present a presentation, a project, uh, that symbolize gratitude. And I, I will not say much, but, uh, I have Sandra, who's the secretary, to present, actually talk more about our project and what we would like to do here in Utica City.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, honorable members of Utica City Council. So on my behalf and on behalf of Basie American Community Association of Utica, New York, I would like to thank you for giving us opportunity to address you and to introduce our plan of, or maybe I should say idea of how we can improve our city in one way. As many of you know, Basie American Community Association is a local nonprofit organization whose goal is to make our community and our city better every day. Recently, we came up with an idea to build a cultural monument, or maybe I should say a public piece of art, that would symbolize our community's gratitude to the city of Utica and Deonida County. Uh, the monument, or this public piece of art is known as Sebille, and you can see it on the third slide or the third page of this document that we gave you. Now, Sebille is a water fountain, normally built throughout the Ottoman Empire from the fifteenth to nineteenth century. The original purpose of Sebille was to provide water to people, travelers and the local[1658.08] communities. And over centuries, Sebille became symbol of hope, gratitude, goodwill, and charity. Of course, Sebille no longer serves its original purpose because now we, most of us actually have access to free water, but the symbolism behind Sebille remained alive. For many years, Basie communities have been expressing their gratitude by building Sebilles as a gift. So we would like to express our gratitude to the city of Utica and Deonida County by building one such Sebille here in Utica, New York. Now, on slide four, you'll see one such Sebille that was built in St. Louis, Missouri by the local Basie American community from St. Louis for the city's two hundred fiftieth anniversary. On the following slides, you can also see Sebilles built in other cities throughout the world. I know some of them were built in China recently, in other European cities. So actually, what we are looking for you, I mean, from the city of Utica, is actually two things. Permission to build this monument, so if you agree with that, then hopefully you'll give us a building permit. And the location. One location that we have in mind is the space right behind MBCC's paint hall on the Sherman Drive. If that's something you would consider, then yeah, we would greatly appreciate. If not, then we can look into some other locations. And so yes, I mean, as I have said, we need a permission from the city and all the funds will be secured by us, Basie American Community Association. Some local companies, construction companies already did the estimate for us, and it will cost about, well, low less than one hundred nineteen thousand dollars. So once we secure the funds, then we'll start with the project. And we also secure the blueprints for this monument, should I say. Also, I would like to bring to your attention, and unfortunately that slide is missing, that we conducted a little survey with our community members. About one hundred sixty-three people participated in this survey, and ninety-two percent of the participants said that they would love to see this monument in Utica, and eighty-eight point eight percent said that they will be willing to provide funds for this project. So that's our plan, and now it's up to you. If you would like to see it here in Utica, you know, you will just need a permission and the space, and we'll take care of the rest of it. Yeah, any questions?
I'll share the questions. I would like you to ask questions, yes, but at a certain point after we go around, we'll... Yes, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I think this is a terrific idea. I love the symbolism of it. Two, one is sort of a practical question. These were originally water fountains, large elaborate water fountains. Is that, would it still be a water fountain, or would it be purely symbolic?
Good question. Purely symbolic. That's our original plan, but if you would like to see it as a water fountain, which might be a little complicated.
Well, I think it would perhaps be unnecessarily complicated, but that's not when people build... The one in St. Louis, is that a water fountain?
It's just a replica. It's not original water fountain. The water will not come out or anything.
And then approximately, how tall is it from the... Is it, what does that look like? Twenty feet?
Well, I'm six foot six, so let me see, like...
How many of you?
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet, okay.
And just a one similar point, that this monument is very important to us Basies. When we go back to Bosnia, the first thing is that we all go to the monument and it's kind of symbolize the whole city. It's like right there in the city, and it's just, it's just powerful for all of us to go there and be around and take pictures and kind of, it's like you go to Bosnia and if you don't go there, it's like you were not in Bosnia.
I just have one more question, which is where are these traditionally located in relation to the city as a whole?
Well, usually in the downtown, in the center of the city, or...
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
I have one question.
I'm gonna go with Joe, and then I'll move on to...
Your location, you talking back to MBCC, is there any particular reason? Is that just where you've seen land, or like you just said, in the center of the city? I don't want to say that's any outskirts, but where, is there a reason that you decided in that location?
One of the biggest reasons that we were thinking about MBCC because there's a lot of Basie people in East Utica, and that's where we're kind of close to our homes and close to, that was just a one way of it.
That's where the community was built originally.
We are truly open to pretty much any other places. For example, it would be really nice if we could get somewhere downtown where, you know, attraction cafes, restaurants, and when you have people coming visiting Utica, they will be in Utica downtown and not just visiting that monument, it would be visiting all the restaurants, all the, all the attractions that we have in downtown.
Are those also to attract people to stay here? Our generation, who has grown up here, received our educations, most of us starting at MBCC and living in that area, in that surrounding area, we started out from here. This was our moment to finally be able to do something. So it's symbolic in that way as well, but also to try to encourage those who do receive an education here and start their lives here to stay here. It's symbolic in that way also, this monument, to attract people to come back to it. So this would be a big factor in tourism, but it would also attract people to come back and live in this area once they do have their career and life set up.
And just also coming from, there are so many Basies all over America, they would be purposely coming to see this here at Utica, and it's, I'm sure everybody would benefit in some of that.
You're good. Councilperson Ayala?
Thank you. I know you said it would be a gift. Do you have an estimate of how much the project would cost or what you're looking to raise?
Yes, according to the estimate from one local company, and actually I included it in the original presentation, it will be over one hundred eighteen thousand dollars. And just for the record, I already established connection with the mayor of Sarajevo, capital city of Bosnia, and she was willing to provide the blueprints for free, but we already secured blueprints from other companies. And when I say blueprints, I mean the detailed blueprints with electricity, with everything.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah?
I've seen some pictures of them decorated for Christmas. You guys would be safe?
Yeah, you can. You can do whatever you want.
Anyone? All right, well, thank you for the presentation. I apologize for the technical difficulties. And we all know where to find you guys, so... Next order of business, petitions, remonstrances, and appeals. We'll start from council at large, Frank DeBrango today. You ready? I know you're always, you know, you're always the tail end.
I'm ready, but I just want to make a comment to the gentlemen that are in the audience. We had, we passed this legislation back, I believe, in two thousand eighteen, nineteen. It was my first term as a councilperson regarding the apprenticeship. And it was very good. I met with the labor council as well, and they were very satisfied that we did that. I know we are making an amendment to it, and I totally agree with it, instead of, you know, changing it not May to shall, so I'm on board with it and I appreciate you fellas coming in. I've always supported unions, and I will continue to do that as long as I'm here, as long as I'm on this earth. I have a lot of relatives that are union members. I'm actually a union member myself, retired, so I will definitely support this piece of legislation. That'll be all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Were you hoping I wasn't gonna say here?
No, I'm going random today. Fifth district, Councilman Venice Urban, you have the floor.
I got northern one person breaking my chest tonight. I mean, it goes from up there down here. I mean, it's unbelievable.
All I have is, I got this, I think it was yesterday, December to Remember, a free community event sponsored by a variety of community partners on Sunday, December eighteen twenty twenty-two, from twelve PM to five PM. It's gonna be at the Memorial Parkway Recreation Center. All are welcome. And what they're looking for is toy donations for children of all ages, and you could drop them off at Soul One Twelve, Character Coffee, HK Lounge, and Roosters, or you can reach out to Mona Lisa. I think we all know who she is, so that's all I have. And that's, the Parkway Center is actually in Celeste's district, but she usually talks about stuff going to my district, so I figured I'd beat her since I was first.
See, this is, this is why I'm mixing it up today. I like it. I like it. Second district, Councilman Burmaster, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind everybody, you know, it's the holidays, you know, people are some way down, and it's not just the holidays, it's like this year round. If you've got a friend and you, and you think about him, you know, reach out to him, let him know that you're thinking about him, because how many times you say, I've been meaning to do this, and I've been meaning to do that, and I never get back with my friends, and there's always something else coming up. Well, you know, make time. Take that ten minutes and give him a call and say, hey, you know, I've been busy, just have a quick cup of coffee, you know, just let them know that you're thinking of them and, 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 and not just in December, all year round. You know, take time out of your busy schedule, reach out to your friends, your family, and let them know that, you know, somebody else is thinking about them. I think that's so important. And my second thing is, of course, I want to, I want to thank my constituents for, or my colleagues for supporting me this past weekend and with their thoughts and prayers at my dad's passing, and it meant a lot to me, and I just want to share that with you. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Fourth district, Councilman Muyola and Majority Leader.
This one's hard to follow, okay? You know, Bobby brings back some thoughts and stuff about family and stuff, and he's absolutely right. Those of us who are lucky to spend time and words and share thoughts and little stories with our families around the holidays, please don't hesitate. And he's right. Calling a friend, just staying alone, may change that whole person's demeanor and thoughts, and you never know what's troubling somebody until you talk to them. So take the time. Best gift in the world is to make you happy, right? So the holidays are here, and let's do the best we could to make everybody who we touch or talk to or see out there and try to make their, try to give them a smile when we leave. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilor Large, Samantha Cosmo Testa, you have the floor.
I want to go last. Just kidding. I had my brain shot by the time I get to these things, but we've had, we had a wonderful event today at Watson Williams. The school just all around is amazing, and I can't thank the people that I work with, the students. We were, we did the stuff to bus drive this past, the past couple of weeks, and we were in first place, and we collected over fifteen hundred toys. So we're hoping that we keep on to that lead because we get a nice little surprise from Rose or Communication. So I think the kids in that school, for all the effort and hard work that they put in each and every day, deserve something like that. So with that said, I want to thank my colleagues for coming today, Deputy Chief Noonan. We do have another community readers event, so coming in June, so the rest of my colleagues be ready. I'll be asking you to come, come to that. But it is, it is a wonderful event, and it was the first time that we've had it since COVID, and to see the kids, they were amazed by it all, so it was very nice. But I just wanted to point out for the apprenticeship program too, it's funny how things happen inside city government. I don't remember the year, I think it was two thousand eighteen, we had brought this piece of legislation up, and it was very specific that we had to change it from shall to may, and it's because we couldn't force somebody to do it and so on and so forth. So, I mean, you really wouldn't have to be back here at this point in time. You would have had an apprenticeship program going on for about, you know, three to four years now. I'm hoping that we do accomplish the original task that we set forth and to make it may instead of shall, which is a big, a big difference for the apprenticeship world. And I hope there's no excuses to why we can't pass it this time, because it is something that's very important. So hopefully there's no excuses this time, and we can, we can get moving forward on it. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Councilman at Large and Minority Leader, Mark Williamson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I was rudely interrupted by my colleague. Today's Pearl Harbor Day, and we have one of our own Uticans who was killed in action on that, on that fateful day, named Petty Officer Gerald McGee, and we put him, I mean, up at the top of Stuben Street, and that's where he was raised. And I would think he would be the first Utican killed in World War II from this area. He was killed, he's still entombed on USS Arizona as we speak. And he grew up in the lower parts of Stuben Street, and there's a memorial up on the top of the hill there, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Sixth district, Councilman Joe Beatrice, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. President. The only thing I want to say is I attended the Watson Williams reading the book today. I made it through, reading the whole book, and it was, I had a great time, so thank you again for inviting me, and I enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you. Third district, Councilperson's Last Friend.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have much. I'll speak a little bit later about the legislation tonight, the apprenticeship legislation. I'll speak about that when we get to it. I just want to say that Utica apparently has a new community orchestra, which is really terrific. That's been sort of making the rounds on social media. They're called the Half Moon Orchestra. I think that's a big, it's a big piece of our cultural and arts life here that's been missing and that fills a void, and it's not a big orchestra, but it's an orchestra, and it's ours, and I think that that's a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you. First district, Councilperson Katie Ayala, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and for switching it up that way. Total throw. What was I gonna say? Okay, Utica Proud App, I just want to remind people to download it again. That is the city's way of using ARPA funding, one of the ways to put money back into businesses from that COVID relief funding, and for every, I think it's ten dollars you spend, you get a dollar back in rewards, and it also helps people to shop local. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes petitions, remonstrances, and appeals. We have quite a bit on the deck here, so proposed ordinance number one, no parking, Skyler Street. It is sponsored by Councilmember Ayala. Is there a second? Meola's the second. No parking at all times, be it ordained, section two sixteen, three sixty, Schedule E, no parking at all times, be amended to include Skyler Street West Side from the northern fence line of twenty-six Skyler Street South to Oriskne Street West. In parenthesis, it does say added twelve, seven, twenty twenty-two. Be further ordained, the proper signage be erected where necessary. Your votes.
Nine E's adopted.
Proposed ordinance number two, sponsored by Councilmember Cosmo Testa. Our second votes.
I'd like to recommend to refer to committee, Mr. President. I'd like to pull this to the floor. If somebody wants to vote against it, then they can.
There's a preceding motion. Does the motion to refer to committee have a second? Okay, would someone like to second the actual legislation?
Second.
All right. Your votes. It's intersections where stops required, be it ordained, section two sixteen, three five eight, Schedule C, intersection where stops required, be amended to the following. Rescind any previous ordinance, section two sixteen, three five eight, Schedule C, intersections where stops required, South Street and Ontario Street, four-way stop, hang on, at intersection. Replace section two sixteen, three five eight, Schedule C, South Street and Ontario Street, four-way stops, stop at each intersection. Be further ordained, the proper signage be erected. Your votes. I think we need one more. Councilmember Ayala, unless the lights dim, no, we're good.
Eight E's adopted.
Now, it is an ordinance, so it did not pass.
Thank you.
Easy to expose. First.
No, that's all right. You can, you can...
All right, we're good.
Thank you.
Maintain the floor. Thank you. Proposed ordinance number three, intersection where stops required. A lot of stops going on, you know? Be it ordained, the section two sixteen, three five eight, Schedule C, intersection where stop required, be amended to include the following. This one is sponsored by Councilmember Urban. Is there a second? We have a second from DeBrango on this one. Any amendments needed here? Nothing? We're good?
We're good on this one.
Nielsen Street and James Street, southwest corner. Nielsen Street and James Street, northeast corner. Be it further ordained, proper legislation is now in place.
Nine E's adopted.
Yep. Can you see the board? Kind of, all right, you're good? Resolution number four. We're gonna move through these. This one is, are they all sponsored by... Yeah, someone please move each one. We'll ask for a second. Meola's the, all right? Williamson? Second. Commissioner Deeds. Be resolved that the common council does hereby approve the following personnel eligible for appointment to Commissioner Deeds in and for the city of Utica, New York, within term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, Lorraine Kazlowski. I'm gonna say the names, but not the addresses. Thank you. Your votes. Councilperson Testa, your vote. Commissioner Deeds.
Nine E's adopted.
Thank you. Resolution number five, Commissioner Deeds for Michael Rigeria. Second? No, we're not gonna move him as a block.
The resolutions, they can't be.
I'm not moving him as a block. Thank you. Meola's the first. Burmaster's the second. Your votes. Thank you.
Nine E's adopted.
Resolution six is Commissioner Deeds for John Goff, second. Meola, Ayala, your votes.
Nine E's adopted.
Resolution seven, Commissioner Deeds for Ruth Concepcion. Meola, Ayala, your votes.
Nine E's adopted.
Proposed resolution number eight, Commissioner Deeds for Anthony Leon Jr. Ayala's the move on that one. We'll go with Meola for the second. Your votes.
Nine E's adopted.
Proposed resolution number nine, Commissioner Deeds for Nadine Mujic. Meola, Friend, your votes.
Nine E's adopted.
Proposed resolution number ten, Joseph Beatrice. Meola, DeBrango, your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Proposed resolution number eleven, Commissioner Deeds for Frank Mio. Debrango's moving it. Urban is the second. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Okay. Proposed resolution number twelve, uh, I'm just going to call any opposed on this next one. Don't worry about the levers. Uh, resolution number twelve, Venice Urban, Commissioner Deeds. Mio's moving it. Debrango's the second. Any opposed? All right. Proposed resolution number thirteen, Commissioner Deeds for Robert Burmaster. Ilo's moving it. Mio is the second. Any opposed? All right, very good. No, we're just doing, if anyone's opposed, just say, uh, you are. Everyone, I call it. All right. Uh, proposal resolution number fourteen, Commissioner Deeds for Frank Debrango. Mio is moving this one. Burmaster's the second. Any opposed? Okay. Proposed resolution number fifteen, Commissioner Deeds for Andrew Castillo. Mio is moving it. Ilo's the second. Any opposed? Okay. Moving on. Proposed resolution number sixteen, Commissioner Deeds for Martha Ann Markovitz. Mio is moving it. Ilo's the second. Any opposed? Commissioner Deeds. Ordinance number seventeen, this is an ordinance, intersections where stops required. This is Hollingworth Ave and Jefferson Ave. I believe this needs something.
I would like to amend it, Mr. President, to add one-way stop northwest and Hollingsworth, uh, I'm sorry, northwest corner of Hollingsworth.
Corner Hollingsworth.
One-way stop northwest corner of Hollingsworth.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay, so as read into the record, it's been moved by Councilmember Mio. Is there a second? Second by Debrango. Your votes. This ordinance did not pass because it needs a unanimous vote. Thank you.
The signs are pending.
All right.
The signs are up.
All right. Um, proposed ordinance number eighteen is moved by Councilmember Mio.
Rosemont and Mohawk Street. Mr. President, if it's not unanimous, I'd like to refer it to committee. One-way stop southeast corner of Rosemont.
Uh, we don't know if it's unanimous or not, so if you'd like to refer this to committee.
I'll refer it to committee, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
There's no timeout. The signs are up anyway, so.
Any opposed placing this in committee? Okay, it's in committee. Proposed ordinance number eighteen, uh, clerk, Deputy clerk, please note that was committee.
Mr. President, could we?
It's went to committee. Yeah, I, yeah, they do.
Mr. President?
Yes, he discussed that.
Could we rescind number seventeen and remove that and, uh, move that to committee? Could we send our vote?
Yes, he's doing that.
Yes, I'm doing it.
Yes. Yes.
I did that, your honor.
Okay. Somebody who voted in the majority.
Would have to make the motion to rescind.
Needs to make the motion to reconsider.
You read your book very well.
Yes.
Motion to rescind.
I would like to make the motion to rescind, please.
Or not rescind, but reconsider the vote.
Reconsider the vote.
Okay, reconsider the vote on the motion.
Yep.
Okay, uh, for ordinance number seventeen.
Yep.
Is there a second? Okay, uh, before we vote on it, does, does anyone like to make a motion? To refer to committee?
Yes, refer to committee.
Okay. All right. Is there a second or for that to committee? Second. Any opposed placing ordinance number seventeen in committee? Dated twelve seventeen twenty-two, I believe that was dated.
That was correct, Mr. President.
All right, it's in committee. So seventeen's also in committee now.
I also like to place number, ordinance number nineteen in the committee, Mr. President.
Okay, is there a second? Second from Debrango. Any opposed? Nineteen's in committee. All right, we are moving on to Board of V and A ordinance number twenty. This has been sponsored by the Majority Minority Leader, came from E and A. It's twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year. Be it ordained, city controllers hereby authorized and direct to make the following transfer. These are both two accounts due to how the funds have been encumbered. It's prior housing income sources, one hundred fifty thousand dollars, heat smart LMI, one hundred fifty thousand dollars. To reallocate repaid rehabilitation loan funds to the city for economic, economical heat pumps, installation for low to moderate individuals.
Second.
Second? Okay. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Proposed ordinance, uh, number twenty-one, this is sponsored by Councilmember Friend. Is there a second? You can refer it to committee. Well, you could introduce it, refer it right to committee, actually. Okay, we got a second from Ilo.
May I see that?
Yes.
Thank you. So, I was planning on referring it to committee, but a number of people spoke in favor of it already. Is there any appetite to go ahead and have nine votes for this tonight and have it go full council?
Keep it a straw poll. You're moving or we don't.
I need, I need eye contact. He, he's read it. It's, it's, it's absolutely legal. Other cities do exactly this, including Albany does exactly this. So that everybody is clear about this, this is a, um, this is substituting may for shall. This is something that the council tried to do in twenty seventeen. For some reason, they went from a shall back to a may and I'm just turning that back around. I'm changing two words. Not that I, I have quizzed people. Who, I wasn't on the council at the time, so I've asked. Uh, there's no reason to believe that it, it actually is legal. I've checked with, there's enabling state level, enabling legislation that allows us to require this. And a number of cities, including other second-class cities, do have exactly this law on the books, including Albany. So, I don't believe that there's any legal reason that we can't do this.
Is there any reason that we can't keep it in committee and really go over with it?
No, no, that was my, if, if that's what people would prefer.
That's what we said we were going to do.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't have anything against it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's fine. So, Mr. President, I'd like to refer this to committee, please.
Second, Mr. President.
Second?
Yes, sir.
Any opposed placing this in committee? All right, it's in committee. And it's understood that, I think everyone just wants to.
Yeah, yeah.
Check out.
Yeah, yeah. That's fine.
Everyone was very, everyone was very supportive of it in the caucus.
There was enthusiasm and I thought I would just flow, you know?
Yeah, all right. Uh, next ordinance, twenty-two, it's an E and A transfer.
Motion to move, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Anyone? Second? Second for Burmaster. This is to reallocate funds for an employment program. Uh, multiple accounts from CDBG moving into employment, social enterprise two, um, also CDBG. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Yep. Proposed ordinance twenty-three is another large CDBG. Uh, thank you, Judge.
Motion to move, Mr. President.
This is a sum of two point four million dollars and change. We have a motion from Mio, second from Burmaster. Uh, this is a large reallocation from prior accounts over, uh, actually multiple decades. Your votes. It's fourteen years, that's two decades.
Nineties adopted.
Thank you. Proposed ordinance twenty-four. This is another E and A transfer to reallocate ARPA funding. This is from ARPA Johnson Park Center and ARPA rehiring city staff, ARPA new playground equipment, going to Varick Street, UFD Station number one, UFD maintenance facility, residential rehab programs and Liberty Bell Park. Your votes.
Was there a motion, a second?
Oh, I thought they took it. You guys were raising your hands, so, Mio, Ilo, thank you.
Nineties adopted.
Okay, the next ordinance is another E and A transfer that was explained by the sewer department in the pre-meeting conference. Uh, Mio has moved this. Ilo's the second. This is five hundred thousand dollars coming from the sewer fund balance to sewer capital expenditures to adjust for unexpected and necessary repairs as well as emergency repairs on Laker Street. Your votes.
Nineties ad, yeah, nineties adopted.
Proposed ordinance twenty-six, another E and A transfer. This is going from parks, weages to parks salaries, sum of twenty-four thousand dollars. Your votes. Er, did you get, uh, Mio and Friend? Yeah. All right, thank you.
Nineties adopted.
Resolution twenty-seven is a proclamation recognizing Franco's Pizzeria in their fiftieth year in business. Councilman Beatrice, would you like to read this?
No, you can read it, but, um, it's also made it full council, I believe. Everybody's going to support that and you have that on the proclamation.
Full council. Okay. Uh, Mio is the second on this.
No.
A proclamation recognizing Franco's Pizzeria fif, uh, fiftieth year in business. Whereas Franco's Pizza celebrates its fiftieth year in business. Franco's opened in nineteen seventy-two, selling twenty-five cent slices and whole pizzas for two dollars. We got to do the math on that later and figure out if that was actually a deal. Whereas Franco Caparillo was the original owner and founder and whereas Dick Soldato came aboard in the late eighties, taking over the business, in which his son Jeremy has continued to operate for the past ten years. And whereas if you lived in North Utica, you grew up on Franco's Pizza, dodging the Trenton road traffic created by the many cars pulling it out of Franco's Pizza, Pizzeria. And whereas Franco's Pizzeria is to be commended for attaining fifty years in business and still going strong. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Utica honors Franco's Pizzeria on its fiftieth anniversary in the City of Utica, and we cannot thank them enough for being a great asset in the City of Utica. Now be it further resolved that the City of Utica Common Council does hereby recognize Franco's Pizzeria on the occasion of their fiftieth year in business and extend our congratulations and best wishes for many more years of prosperity.
Nineties adopted.
Okay. I do want to say something about this one. So, I grew up in East Utica, eating all the East Utica pizza there is to offer. And, uh, I have to say, my wife was from North Utica, grew up on North Hook Drive. Um, when I first started dating my wife, that's when I started eating Franco's Pizza at her house on Saturdays and Sundays with her, with her parents. And, uh, that's, that's, it's seriously a North Utica staple. And, uh, in Utica, all the neighborhoods have their pizzerias and there's all the rivalries, but they're all great. So, Franco's, fifty years. All right, we have another Commissioner Deeds. Proposed resolution number twenty-nine. This one is for Samantha Colasmo Testa. It's moved by Debrango.
Yeah.
Seconded by Burmaster. Your votes.
He's looking nice.
Nineties adopted.
Oh, you're not like mine, you just defeat my legislation.
All right. Hey, you guys want to bank it forth, let's keep the floor in order. Uh, proposed resolution number thirty, authorizing the sale of wine and beer to ORB Food and Beverage Service. Name of the sponsors, ORB Food and Beverage. Name of the event is Bright Nights. Date of the event is December seventeen, four eight P M. Utica Zoo, One Utica Zoo Way, Utica, New York, one three five oh one. Your votes. Who's the second? All right, thank you.
Nineties adopted.
Okay. Proposed resolution number thirty-one, Commissioner Deeds for David R. Raffaro.
It's a nice note to end on.
Mio, Burmaster, your votes.
And, Mr. President, can I have the floor for one moment after you call?
Councilman Beatrice?
Nineties adopted.
Uh, Councilperson Friend would like the floor.
So, I just, I got distracted by my own enthusiasm. So, I would like to call for a meeting of the committee of the whole to discuss that apprenticeship training legislation on Wednesday, January fourth. I didn't, in this part of the meeting.
I'd also like to request something from the clerks.
So, we're all set with that?
All right.
We're all set with that? And we're going to invite these gentlemen?
All right. So, um, in light of what Councilperson Colasmo Testa had mentioned, on the date of that's the original passing, can we please pull the tape from that meeting so we can figure out what the discussion was and why it was will? All right? Thanks. Right. Right, so it'd be, if we're going to do the meeting, let's go over it. We'll figure it out once and for all. Thank you. It's all set. She, do you second it?